Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session, which has been scheduled for today for the purpose of discussing the following school board policies: B, school governance; BBBG; board elections; BDC, board officers; BE, school board meetings; BEC, executive sessions; BEDH, public input at school board meetings; and BI, board members' insurance liability. The public will not have an opportunity to participate at this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting, and no action will be taken. And there will be no pre-agenda period in which the public normally addresses the school board on german topics that are related to this work, the board. The public will have an opportunity to provide input at a future rule development workshop and subsequent school board meeting. Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. As a reminder, face masks are required indoors and school board property, on all school board property, which includes the boardroom and the lobby. And board members are attending in person and telephonically. One is telephonic, so I'll take a quick roll call. Member Gallo.
President, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Lopez?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. Member Covert?
Good afternoon, Chair.
Vice Chair Gould?
Good afternoon.
Member Felder?
Good afternoon.
Member Byrd?
Good afternoon, Chair.
And Member Castredal is not with us. She should be joining us shortly, and I will try to remember to acknowledge her for the benefit of the minutes when she arrives. I want to remind the public and board members that we will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus 100% of our attention on the meeting itself. And if you wish to contact us, of course, you're always welcome to reach out to us, but you will not be receiving response during the meeting. To my fellow board members, district staff, when speaking, please make sure you speak directly into the microphone and make sure it's turned on. And with that, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to recognize, I think I'm going directly to our general counsel. I do want to just make a quick comment. I know our general counsel is going to mention this as well, and she's going to go over a timeline. But for anybody who might be tuning in now or at a future point in time, these are a series of school board governance policies that we have had in the process for quite some time. And the timing of us discussing it today has no reflection on where we are in terms of public input. It just has to do with trying to find the time to get to the normal business of the school board in such a trying and challenging time. Ms. Enval, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as a bit of background, the seven policies, the B policies, and this is our first series of B policies, have already come to work sessions on the following dates. If you recall, back on December 1st of 2020, Ms. Fernandez started you off. Then we had another work session on February 16th, and another one on March 23rd. So this has been a long process. Normally, this is not our policy adoption process. It doesn't usually go through that many recitations and work sessions, but these are your policies. So this is something that you need to provide the guidance on, and you need to make sure you're comfortable with. This is not like an operational policy or things like that, which is why this is a little bit unique. So you have a number of policies for you, and I think the best thing to do is potentially what we did before, go through the red line so you can see the policy revisions that have already been made. The items that have been highlighted in yellow, I highlighted the distinction between the board policies because they're all in one continuous document, but the new provisions that you had discussed back in March have been highlighted in yellow as we go through. And I know it's been a while since we went through these, so I'm not sure the best way to tackle them. I know it's really hard to draft policies with all of us together in one room, but it's a tedious process, and I want to make sure that you all are comfortable with what they are. So I would just recommend we start with Board Policy B, go through it. I can read it for you, or you can read it on your own, whatever the pleasure is.
Ms. Enval, I have a suggestion, actually. Why don't we take, maybe we take one page at a time?
Sure.
Okay? And just, you can go through it, but then, because I know I've got a couple of things on each page, and I don't want us to get too far off. So board members, everybody comfortable reading this, or do you want Ms. Enval to read it to us? Yes?
I think most of us have read it, so maybe if we just go to the point that people want to clarify.
Okay. All right, so on the first page.
I will start, yes. The first title is Global Government's Commitment, and this is generally the overview. It is, most of the changes are to formatting and to terminology, so it's consistent with our other policies. These policies have not been revised. There was a big policy revision in 2008, and so this is, I'm taking out some of the noise in between. So we usually had the school board governance, you know, in the section every single time in between each session, and that just wasn't, didn't seem to be as prudent anymore. Governance Style is your next one. This is the board.
Can you stop there?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
If we could stop with the first page? So a couple of little things, and these are more stylistic, but the first sentence, "The purpose of the School Board of Orange County on behalf of the people of Orange County is to see to it that..." The "is to see to it" is, I don't know, it's kind of a folksy colloquial, I don't know. And it just doesn't sound like the professional terminology that this board would typically use. So I don't, I don't want us to get necessarily into wordsmithing, but if we can all agree that we should refine that language so it's not "to see to it."
Ensure.
Ensure would be a much better word. And then I also will say it again every time there's an "assure."
Ensure, "assure," we need to make sure we're consistent.
"Assure" is almost always "ensure."
Absolutely.
The other, the other observation, when I got down to two, I started to fill in. It says that "The Board holds itself accountable to the citizens of Orange County by ensuring that all actions it takes is consistent with the Board's policies." Well, I was, I do this, I jump ahead sometimes, but I was thinking it also should be, we should make sure that our policies are consistent with our strategic plan, our mission, vision, da-da-da. But then I see in three that we've covered that. But again, it's just a wording, it's just the way it's worded, that I think we could refine that wording a little bit and make it a little crisper. If the board's okay, rather than me read suggestions, perhaps, if it's all right, maybe Ms. Enval and I could talk about this before it comes back to rule development. And then do you pass it out to board members, or how do you want to deal with that?
I will, just like I do before. I will send it to you ahead of time. This version was sent to you late last night because I wanted to make sure I rewatched and checked my notes from our March meeting, but I will send it to you ahead of time if there's any other individual tweaks that you have before. Because once we publish it for our rule development workshop, we can't make any more substantive changes. So y'all, excuse me, as we're going through here, I will make myself some little notes, like it says "refine." I'll do that just so that I know that that's something that we need to take a look at.
Okay. And have we gotten to E under Governance Style?
So when you did Governance Style, those are the things that you, the discussion before was to make it more proactive instead of reactive, and so E says proactivity rather than reactivity. But we can do whatever you'd like.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. It's Board Job Description. No, it's...
Governance Style?
It's under Governance Style. It's 2E.
2E.
And the only concern I have there, this is where we're going to monitor our progress, and it does say that the Board may waive this requirement by a motion and a vote. And I'm, I think we should be able to waive it. I'm not sure that it needs to take a formal motion and vote.
Do you want to do consensus?
Consensus. Oh, sorry. I don't want board members in a crisis situation, like in the middle of a pandemic, to be concerned about having a vote of waiving this provision. So I thought a less formal process, but a discussion by the board. Maybe it's direction, maybe it's consensus, but I just didn't think it needed to take an action item of a vote.
Okay.
Okay. Back to you, Ms. Enval.
Moving back, Board Job Description. Any changes in there? That was basically technical changes. Chairs Role.
All right. I know I did this last time. We had a little bit of concern about the Chair's Role, and we've made some changes. Number two is "assure," needs to be "ensure," but that the Board discusses only those issues, which, according to Board Policy, clearly belong to the Board, not the Superintendent. I can try. I can't ensure. And frankly, there are times when the Board discusses things that are in the purview of the Superintendent, that we've delegated to the Superintendent, but when we're here at the Board table, we have a lot of conversations about, not a lot, but we have conversations about operational issues that come to our attention. We have it as a Board. I don't think that we overstep, but if I'm supposed to assure or ensure that we never do this, it's not something, even if I didn't, if I thought we were in the wrong area, if the majority of the Board wants to do that, I don't, there's no gag. There's nothing I can do. So I felt a little uncomfortable with the absoluteness of that.
What is that, generally?
Generally?
Yeah. Generally instead of clearly?
Again, it is, it's my responsibility.
Just, why can't you just say "just belongs to?"
Say what?
He says that a clearly, a generally, why can't you just say "belongs to the Board to decide?"
Well, then it wouldn't be the Chair's Role, and maybe it...
Actually, generally could go before discusses.
Uh-huh. Ensure that the Board generally discusses only, okay?
And keep clearly?
No.
No.
I'd like to believe that I could ensure that our meetings are always efficient, timely, and orderly. We've done a pretty good job lately, but again, it comes down to...
Endeavor.
Generally.
In place of clearly.
So the policy generally belongs...
Ensure that Board meeting deliberation is generally...
I think endeavor is a better word than ensure.
I think so, too.
Here's my point. If board members, and this, I'm not talking about this Board, but if board members don't want to operate efficiently, the Chair doesn't have, I have no authority over my fellow board members, and I shouldn't have authority over my fellow board members. I'm here, you know, from a parliamentary purpose, but not to stifle if the Board wants to. I think it is a Board, I think this should be a Board goal, but I just don't think it's for me to enforce. Does that make sense?
So do you want to change all those to endeavor to ensure? Or just endeavor?
Endeavor.
Yeah, and it would be the same thing. Endeavor...
Endeavor that.
My computer.
Or guide?
Endeavor to.
Endeavor to? Endeavor to that? Ensure. Yes?
Okay. I can, yeah.
Okay. Let me change this here, too.
Endeavor to ensure that the Board generally, or that generally the...
The Board discusses only those issues which, according to Board Policy, generally belong to the Board. So generally discusses, that generally needs to be moved grammatically. That's incorrect. So go back to generally, yeah.
Yes.
English teacher.
No, I love English teachers. I'm glad we have an English teacher. We have two of them. And then one other observation about this. This is a really, really difficult way to wordsmith a document, and it does lead me to wonder if there wouldn't be appropriate for us to reconvene a policy subcommittee just for the purpose of this tedious work, but that's for, that's for the Board's consideration of future time. We'll try to wade our way through this, but I got, I've become more sensitive about words.
And we are discussing subcommittees below as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so are we okay?
Yeah.
Moving forward? This is where we said at the Chair's absence, you had already discussed all of that. Moving on to Board Established Advisory Committees. So this, I have a little note in the side there. I was directed to shorten it for clarity. So you're asking an attorney to shorten a policy, so I did the best I could. It is kind of redundant, but I think the discussion of the Board before was to make sure that you had some clearly defined requirements for your Board Established Advisory Committees. So I created headings for each of them. This first one is Creation of Board Established Advisory Committees. You would create them by resolution. You would include the duration, the initial advisory committee members, all of those things. Section two is Recommendations, saying specifically that they're not binding, but it is definitely something that you will consider. That's why they're advisory in nature. If there's a conflict between the provisions of this policy and other policy or within any Board Established Advisory Committee bylaws, the provision of this policy governs. And then General Principles, and what I tried to do is take what was already in there, but it may also be redundant. But is it easier for you to see the non-red line version, or is it, are you still okay with the underline, the strike through? Okay. I'll be happy to read it for you if you'd like, but I think...
I have one comment on this. It says that the Board will appoint the initial advisory committee members. I think we might have discussed this last time. The only concern that I have about initial is, again, I'm going to always look at what could possibly go wrong. So we appoint a group of people, and they decide to appoint other people. So we're not clear. We appoint the initial ones. Who's appointing anyone after that? And I think that basically, anybody that gets added to a committee that we create, we ought to, what's the word?
Ratify.
Ratify.
Right.
Yeah. Or we could have a committee that just doesn't reflect...
I think down here, you have a, I thought you had a provision for, maybe not. Maybe that's in the stuff that was taken out. So are you saying for subsection one there to...
We should appoint initial advisory committee members and ratify any proposed additions to the committee or substitutions. At a minimum. I mean, I think it's tedious if every time board members have to come up with who's going to replace it. I think if the Superintendent or her staff or the committee itself has suggestions, that'd be fine. I just think at the end of the day, it should come back to the Board. You could end up with a Board entirely different than what you started out with. That doesn't reflect our community at all.
So you want to require the School Board ratify or reappoint, or...
Ratify.
Because who would then be appointing?
Well, my thinking is, depending on the committee and how it's set up, it might be set up that the Superintendent or her cabinet might make recommendations. It might be set up that the subcommittee itself could bring forward recommendations.
Right.
I'm fine with either of those. I just think they need to come back to the Board.
I think approve, approve might be a better word.
Approve?
Get into union language on ratification.
Okay. Okay. Did you push it? It looked like you pushed a button, but it's not showing up. Are you okay?
Yeah, no. She made the change. I thought it should be or.
Okay, good.
It could be two different actions depending on the committee.
Okay, good. All right, Ms. Enval?
Okay. That's not what it's going to say. I'm going to use capital letters so I know what I want to go back and wordsmith. Okay, so moving forward down there, we, I think everything else was pretty self-explanatory. There weren't a lot, there wasn't a lot of discussion on that in the March meeting. There may have been more in February. The Board Subcommittee Structure, Board Subcommittee, is that something that you did all discuss? Nothing new from our last, since our last March discussion? Do you want me to pause so you can take a look at those? Okay, to scroll up. The language in yellow was based on a comment you had at your March 23rd meeting. Only members who have been appointed to a particular Board Subcommittee may vote on an item before the Board Subcommittee and bring such an item as a recommendation back to the Board for subsequent action. You didn't want everybody who wasn't appointed to the Subcommittee to be able to vote. Is that okay? That capture your thoughts?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand some things. Okay, so now, okay, I agree with that, but once they bring it, once the Board Subcommittee brings it back to the Board, we then do have the right to vote, right? That's all, okay. I'm sorry. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
What we want to avoid is, say you have a Subcommittee that consists of three, maybe Board Members that come every meeting, and then one meeting, a Board Member comes that hasn't been to any of the meetings, and they want to vote, and they haven't been. We want this to be as open to as many Board Members as possible, but we do want to make sure there's some consistency in the process. So a little bit of skin in the game.
So before your policy, you had specifically legislated communication budget and policy. The language that you had before there, I thought we put that in there.
Yeah.
It was up farther, right?
Yeah.
There we go. To address legislative and budget issues, the shall have a Board, because you were very clear about how you wanted to make sure that those two were specifically established. I don't know if you want to add, may have a policy committee, but to me, you're already allowed to do that under this policy. So, you good? All right.
Madam Chair, hang on, hang on.
Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, it just occurred to me on that number six that's highlighted, and it may be board members who have a better memory than me. It used to be that we specifically said subcommittees were not taking votes. They were coming to a consensus to bring it to the Board for a vote. That you, yeah, you bring a recommendation by consensus. There were no, there were supposed to be no formal votes in subcommittees, but that's at the Board's discretion at this point.
Okay, let's open that up for conversation because we just need to change this language. Member Gould?
So until something really comes to this table and is fully vetted and presented, I don't, I don't think there is what we would call a final vote on anything. So even, I do like the language of consensus better, so it's not confusing for the public so that if they're, they do listen in on a Subcommittee meeting and there is an agreement on something that's coming before the Board, it's not a done deal there, ever, until it comes onto our agenda and to the table.
Can I ask you a follow-up question to that? So based on that, do you think that the language should still include that unless you're on the Subcommittee, that you shouldn't be part of the consensus? Or is that anybody who shows up at that meeting? And that's just, because I completely understand what you're saying, and I think it's a great idea not to have a vote. You don't want to have a vote of the Subcommittee that says this, and the Board does something else after further discussion. I'm going to wait for a response from Vice Chair and then go to Member Covert on the same issue.
So I honestly don't think it matters because until it comes to this table, and we may have some new bit of information from the time that we built consensus or took a vote in a Subcommittee, to the time it comes to the table, that completely changes what somebody thought when they were for or against. So to me, it doesn't, it doesn't have bearing on the outcome of the process, so I am good either way with that language as long as the buck stops at this table in a regular Board meeting.
Okay. Member Covert?
So a good example of this would be the Budget Committee, which is, has prescribed members. So in the past, while I have not, I did not sit on the Budget Subcommittee, I would attend. So, so no, I wasn't part of the consensus there, but could attend. So I think this language works. Same with Member Gould.
Okay. And Member Byrd, your thoughts?
Well, that kind of clarified it a little bit more for me. I was just wondering, are we, are you, are we concerned about other Board Members, or are we concerned about other people from the community being at these meetings? Either one? Is that what worries your concern lies?
I think, clarify if you could, Ms. Enval. I think when we're talking about Board Subcommittees, we're talking about a Subcommittee of the Board. These are only Board Members. These aren't our advisory committees.
Right. And there's, since there isn't usually a vote that you're going to take, the public doesn't usually, they have an opportunity to attend, but not necessarily an opportunity to participate and provide comment.
So the Budget Committee, is that an advisory committee, or is that a Board Subcommittee?
I think that one is a little bit of both, because I think the Budget Committee is that in waiting for Mr. Palmieri. I think, is that part of the CTA bargaining agreement? So that's kind of a hybrid, if that makes sense.
And I think we might have discussed this the last time, that we didn't really have a good place for that. There's nothing to keep Board Members from serving on an advisory committee. So does it, since it's not a Subcommittee that is only made up of Board Members, does that make it an advisory committee? No, it doesn't, because we don't get to decide who serves on it. Vice Chair.
So on that one, I think there is mutual agreement on the representation, if I am dusting the cobwebs off of my brain right now, but I believe there is, you know, that we say there's two Board Members and two from each Union or whatever it is. So I think maybe when there is a prescribed, maybe the language change here is when there is a prescribed structure to a Subcommittee.
So do you want me to add?
That's when it matters, right? Otherwise, I mean, our Communications Committee, our Legislative Committee, any policy committee that we would have, I would think we would want all Board Members to have input and a skin in the game in those. But when we have a prescribed committee, such as the Budget Committee, that involves other partner entities, that's when it's a little different.
Okay. So it sounds like you need almost another section, or, go ahead. Dr. Jenkins?
I'm just going to add one clarification. So the anomaly of that Budget Committee and contractual language should be going away. It was one of the items that the CTA asked to remove, and so that anomaly will actually go away. That'll make for a much cleaner delineation.
Yeah, well, collective bargain wise, it will, it will probably be going away, because we won't oppose it.
Then we'll have to revise this policy, unless, Ms. Enval, you could come up with some proposed language that incorporates what Vice Chair just mentioned?
Yep.
As I think that, that makes sense to me. And it might not...
I always hold out hope for the future. It will be collaborative instead of collaborative.
Member Covert, your button is still pushed. That's not, okay, I didn't think it was on purpose. All right, Ms. Enval.
Okay. So moving down, next one is the Annual Agenda Planning. This, you didn't have any, I think we actually selected on this language back in February.
I have one comment here?
Yes.
And I just may be misunderstanding, it's under 2B. It says the planning cycle will start with the joint development of the strategic plan with the Superintendent. There's a period after Superintendent, I think, or maybe it's a, yeah, I think. Anyway, that's, when I think of the development of the strategic plan, I think of what we did when we, when five new Board Members came on. So when I read this, it suggested to me that we were going to develop a strategic plan each year. So I thought that maybe we needed to say the development or update, or I don't know, but I'm just got confused about, okay? You all right with that, Dr. Jenkins? Okay. It could be the review, comma, development, the joint review, comma, development, or update. And that gives us three different possibilities for what we might, because we might not be technically updating, we're just be providing data.
Okay. All right. Moving down, I don't think you had any more changes in there. This is the Board, the section entitled Board Members' Code of Conduct. Those are primarily...
Can we change businesslike to professional? On one, this goes back to my happy to glad, but I mean, businesslike isn't always...
Yes?
Yeah. Businesslike could be a lot of things.
Moving down. Moving down.
I have one, I'm so sorry.
Sure, that's okay. That's why we're here.
Thank you. Okay, 2A, Roman numeral 2.
Okay.
Although all board members are obligated to register differences, I think encouraged might be better than obligated. Individual members may direct their differences of opinion in a respectful manner. I think they, they should, they shall, rather than may. You know? I mean, and then it goes on to say, in a respectful manner, which would not undermine a decision of the board. I would change it slightly to say to avoid undermining, but that's a happy to glad. But the shall to, the may to shall, I think, is material.
I'm sorry, one more time. In, in a respectful manner, which would avoid undermining?
In a respectful manner to avoid undermining a decision of the board majority. I think it's, I think this, by the way, is really important, and I was glad to see this. I wish we'd had this at the county. In the worst way. So, it is, it's, it's good stuff. I just think that mainly that it shouldn't just be a may. Board members should not do that.
Okay. Any other changes?
I do.
Yes?
I don't, I don't want to be here all day either, I'm so sorry. B, Roman numeral 1D. It says, board members shall not be deemed to be in violation of the working, no, hang on, where's this next sentence? Provided, however, such issue must be brought to the attention of the superintendent, so that appropriate staff members may respond. So, we have constituent relations. A constituent emails us about a problem at the school. What we typically do right now, under the direction of the superintendent, is we let the area superintendent know about it and have them resolve it. This would suggest that we need to bring all of them to the superintendent, and then she needs to direct the appropriate staff. So, at this point, the superintendent has kind of, Dr. Jenkins, we're right on this, right? That you would prefer for us to let the area superintendent know, we can copy you, but I don't think you want us sending all of them to you and you having to send all of them on. So, I was gonna suggest that we say, brought to the attention of the superintendent or the appropriate cabinet member, the, so that they, so that the appropriate staff members may respond.
Or, or, and?
Or. Or, I don't know, that's up to the, to Dr. Jenkins. Do you want to be copied on all of them, or do you want us?
And.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know. I never quite know, and I didn't know if I felt like I was.
I mean, they bring them to me anyway. Save a step, because they bring them to me anyway.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
I, I want to get some clarification. Oh, okay, and D. Yes, a lot. Okay, so, let me just make sure I'm understanding. No board member may become, become directly involved in solving parent or citizen complaint at the staff level. Provided, however, board members shall not be deemed to be in violation of this provision if working with an issue brought to the board member by their constituents. So, let me just be clear. So, if there's a concern with members of our constituency, and they tell us as a board member, this particular policy, is it stating that we can respond to it? We won't be in violation of the provision if we respond to it? Okay, as long, and let me see. Such issue must be brought to the, okay. After we bring it to the superintendent and the appropriate cabinet member. An appropriate cabinet member superintendent could be area superintendent, or, okay, or deputy superintendent, or chief of staff. Okay. Just want to be clear. Thanks.
But, just for, Vice Chair? Okay. The, the only clarification there is that at that point, we brought it to their attention, so that they can resolve it. So, it's not just a matter of I brought it to Harold Borde because of the high school, so I brought it to his attention. But now, I'm going to intervene and I'm going to fix the problem. So, you got to, we're on.
No, no. No, I'm not trying to fix the problem, but I do want to have the ability to, it's, uh, identify the problem and give it to the, the appropriate cabinet person, which would be our area superintendent. And if I can pass it on to our deputy superintendent, Dr. Vasquez, and of course, Dr. Jenkins, who is our superintendent. Because sometimes, they may not get it, you know, until somebody tells me, or tells somebody on the board, and then we can let it, let them know. But, I just want to make sure we have that opportunity.
Absolutely.
To do that. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely. Vice Chair?
So, there are times we all break this policy the way that it is written. And bus stops, and how do I pay my cafeteria bill would be two that come to mind. Because I don't send that through the cabinet people. I send it directly to the resource that they need, so that, that, that's what I do. I'm, I'm gonna tell you.
Okay, so, to clar, for clarification, do you send it to Roberto, or who do you send it to?
No, I either go to Bill Wen or even direct them directly to the website, so that they can put in the information to get their address, so that they know where their bus stop is. So, I think there are some simple housekeeping things that we may want to clarify, that if it takes the resource of someone to intervene, or if it's just getting the constituent connected to that resource. I know we're in the weeds there, but.
And this is about a complaint. So, it's not, I, I need information, where's my bus stop? This is a complaint.
Well, I don't like where that bus stop is. Again, there's, Mr. Wen has the data to back that up, and it's gonna get to him, so.
Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, so I would, Member Gold, I would still prefer that it go through Mr. Pacheco, because Mr. Wen is going to then circle around and bring it back to him anyway. And so, it'll save time if you just stick with the cabinet level.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but everyone agrees that if it's information that is available on our website, that we should be directing them to where to get those, that, that information, rather than sending them to Roberto. Poor Roberto. Member Gold, I mean, sorry, Member Cobert, and then Member Castor.
All right, so I, I just want to clarify, because this is, this is going to mean an enormous amount of additional email going through the superintendent's box. Might I suggest the way the last line is written, that the superintendent or designee, because most of the time, when there is an issue at one of my schools, I, I do, I go to the area superintendent or cabinet member, but I don't copy the superintendent, because I know that they will resolve the problem. So, if everything according to the way the policy is written here, superintendent would have to be copied on.
Dr. Jenkins.
I'm okay with that, Member Cobert, because what you don't realize is that the staff member's copying me on it anyway. Just saves a step.
So, instead of the and?
No, leave it.
Leave the and?
Mm-hmm. Okay, absolutely. Member Castor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, again, think that there will be a lot more emails. There are some issues that we are actually able to explain or solve without necessarily involving everybody. So, that, that part where it says, the first line, no member may become directly involved in solving. Sometimes, we don't need. Are, are we just trying to not confuse or have the board member interact with a staff member? Like, we're not directing the staff member? Is that what we're trying to accomplish?
Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, that is part of it. It creates mass confusion if staff members at a second and third tier are taking direction from eight different board members. So, it's to make us more efficient and timely. We can get the work done if it's narrowed into a, a direct chain. What happened, so, let me give you a prime example. A couple of years ago, someone was trying to get something done through Communication Department. She just went straight down there to the Graphic Arts people and asked them, get this created for me. Didn't stop there, because that individual had to talk to his supervisor, who talked to his supervisor, who finally got to Scott. It could have been done in the reverse. If she'd gone to Scott instead, it would have easily been done. When you talk to lower-level staff people, they're gonna go up the chain, trying to get authority, in most instances, to solve it. It's, it's really much more efficient if you start it at the top with the cabinet level.
Okay, so, if we are able to solve it on our own, without involving staff, then we don't have to necessarily copy everybody?
Lovely. Lovely.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you can solve it on your own, without talking to staff? Yes. Okay. I, I was just gonna opine for a minute, that in Orange County, this was what Dr. Jenkins is concerned about, was a huge problem. And even though it was in our county charter, adopted by the citizens, this non-interference with staff clause, we constantly had issues with one board member or another thinking that their district was kind of like, they were like chief over their district. And they would call staff, and they would want this pothole fail, extra, that issue. And it was tough on staff, because every year, our senior staff had to come up for reappointment. So, they wanted to please the board member, but making sure that we equitably used our resources, and that there wasn't political favoritism. And, anyway, so I just, you know, it wasn't every board member, but some of them just felt that was kind of their job to grease the wheels for this person or that person. So, I was thrilled to see this in place, and to see how well everybody was adhering to it. But, but that clarification, Member Castor, was really important. I haven't been in a position where I could solve a problem without, without the help of the cabinet members. But, other than here's how to find the information for yourself. Member Bird.
Thank you. On, on what Karen Castor was just saying, sorry, with, with no board member may be become directly involved. I'm still feeling like, if, if we can't, like she just said, and like we just said, if we can do it ourselves, we can become involved in solving a parent or citizen complaint. Oh, but not at the staff level. That's what we're saying. So, it's really not, it's, it's, we can solve it, but not direct the staff. Okay, it's a little, little bit confusing there. But, I also, I think something about the wording of this and the red lines is still not flowing for me. I don't know if it's because it says provided however, blah, 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 and then provided however, blah, 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 blah. It almost feels like it just keeps going and keeps going, like, I don't know if.
Would you like, Ms. Enval?
Separate sentences. Yeah, it sounds like it's just very kind of repetitive. I don't know if, maybe there's some way it could be a little more concise.
So, Ms. Enval, this goes to wordsmithing and editing. So, bring us back a version that, after you've taken all this input, that's maybe a little more concise. Great. Excellent.
Got it. Okay, so, moving on down further, those are just grammatical and capitalization changes. Next section is process for addressing score, uh, board member violations. Those are just minor. Pausing for input? No? Next, we did take out the procurement and purchasing, because it was redundant, as you recall. Yep.
Go back to the, please, on page 12. Policy, the board is committed to faithful, okay. Something about violation. Let me, let me, I need that explained. What do you, um, let me see. Okay. Process for avas, uh, addressing board member violations. The board is committed to faithful compliance with provisions of the, the board's policy. In the event, oh my God. Yeah, that's better, because my glasses. Okay. In the event of members' willful and continuing violation of the policy, the board will seek remedy by the following process. Okay. Give me an example of a violation, of a board member's violation. What are you talking about? Does anybody know?
Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, so if you've observed some other board meetings, it could be an instance of the board's concerns around.
Say it again, if I do what? I'm sorry.
Scratch that part, I shouldn't have said that. So, it, so, sometimes, when you observe other board meetings, you've not observed it here, but if you've observed other board meetings, let's say there is a specific policy around professional behavior, and there's a board member who repeatedly is acting out inappropriately.
At another board, not ours.
I've never seen that here.
Not here.
Yeah. So, so if there, if there's a policy that governs behavior, and one board member refuses, a better example is if we say, you know what? If there's an issue and a problem-solving issue, you give that to the superintendent and staff, rather than trying to save it, or trying to solve it. And a board member came repeatedly to the table and said, there's an issue here, here, and here. I'd like to see these board, uh, these bus stops moved to here, here, and here. It's below the line, it's outside of what your policy says they should be doing, and then they do it repeatedly?
Okay, okay.
Refusing to follow the, the guidance in the policy, then here's what the board's remedy could be for that board member who refuses to follow the board's policies.
So, this is like, generally speaking, like, we put policy in place, whatever policy is.
Any policy.
Yeah, and you have a board member who continuously.
Disregards.
Disregards or violates, okay. Okay. But we haven't had that here, right? Okay. All right.
I was gonna say, not in a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Not since, not since I've been here, but. Not in nine, I didn't think so, but I can, I can remember back in the day.
Okay. Moving on, you have officially hit your halfway mark. So, there we go. We had, just so you know, we had board policy BBBG. And it was titled Board Elections. Then we have policy BDG, which is called, titled Board Officers. This is an effort to put them all into one, because there's, in my opinion, there's really no need to have a policy that has two or three sentences in it, so. And to me, it's also transparent for the public, so they know to go one place. So, the recommendation is to combine BBBG into BDC, and then repeal BBBG. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a lot of Bs, sorry.
And, and another recommendation is to get rid of all these letters, but anyway.
That's all, that's our next B, set of B policies. Because you have a policy that requires you to follow those, so. Anyway, this is the, just the membership of the board, just cleaned it up a little bit, so it looks a little bit nicer. The language in subsection 6, which down below, we have policy BIE, which is also being recommended to be incorporated into policy BDC. Just that section there, 6, that policy BIE was very, very short. And so, now, we're going to effectively take your board, your Board Officers section, and put in the things that are relative to the Board Officers. Does that make sense?
Can, can I ask you? I'm a little, um, no, I don't, I'm not sure if we got here or not. It's item 4 under BE, Board Meetings. Are we there yet?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Almost.
Okay.
So, I'll move down for, down further. The next section is Organization of Officers, that talks about the Chair, that talks about the Vice Chair. And we, this is the way thing we figured before, in the event that the Chair is absent or unable to fulfill their role, we actually moved that up into the policy, or the, before that. So, that was, there wasn't anything that was discussed, even the last one. Now, we're moving on to Board Policy BE, which is School Board Meetings.
So, under 4?
Yes.
It says that the copies of the agenda for regular meetings shall be made available at least seven days prior to the scheduled meeting date to the public or other parties who have expressed a desire for such copy of the agenda. A little concerned about that language, and the reason being that we, we sometimes had people who wanted us to remember to send them the agenda for different meetings on different subjects, and it was more than staff could keep up with, trying to keep track of that. So, I just think that this part about who have expressed a desire, I, we post stuff. If people want the agenda, I think it's a little outdated. So, I would prefer us not feel like we have to send it to people who have expressed a copy.
And I think some of these were, like you said, before we had the electronic on the website. I mean, there was a time, even when I was here before, in 2012, 2013, where we would print, staff would print out the copies of the, the board agenda and all its supporting documentation. We would actually drive it, because I've dri, I've dropped off some materials at houses before of board members. So, now, it's all electronic, so this is a little.
So, I would put a period after public or other parties. I'm not sure who the other parties are that aren't public, but that might be, but I think we can just get rid of the last part of that sentence, at this point.
Except for the special meeting.
Yeah? Oh, no, no, all I'm saying is, for the seven days prior to the scheduled meeting date to the public or other parties, period. And not the rest of that sentence. Yeah, I would just say to the public, period. Rather than, and just give it.
We're having a, we have a phone a friend, we have a statutory check, just in case.
Okay. Yes, John?
So, our, our agenda process is governed by 125-25 Florida statutes. It says, "An agenda shall be prepared by the agency in a time to ensure a copy of the agenda may be received at least seven days before the event by any person in the state who requests a copy and who pays the reasonable cost of a copy." So there is still that provision of statute where they could say, I want a paper copy of it, and we would have to provide it.
Okay. Thanks, John. It's always good to know.
I think the statutes have a knock contact technology.
But thank you, we need to leave it in there, thank you, John. I mean that sincerely.
But we still post it, I mean, we can add.
Yes.
You know, these, we know that we post them on the agenda.
So should we match the language that says to anyone in the state there to express the well, public and other parties already invites them, so. But it could be somebody from Georgia right now, or Texas, or Wisconsin, or.
And if they do a public records request, we would charge them the appropriate fee and mail it to them.
So you want to just include other parties in the state who have, maybe?
Well, match what the statute says on that particular segment of the sentence, that was my suggestion.
You want to read that to us again? You could do that, that would work too.
That was a good catch, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think your point is well taken, though we should at least include that it's available digitally. And then if requested, can be provided.
What are you doing, editing on the slider?
But I need, switching back and forth is fun. There we go.
Okay. Yeah, the most will be cost us, but we're good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Moving on.
Oh. Yes.
Yeah.
And then you wanted to add a copies of the agenda for special meetings. Okay. You want to make copies shall be, or copies.
How about just agendas will be posted.
Yeah.
Visually to our website?
Shall be.
Shall be, yes.
To the district website, yes, district's website, the website. Yes? Okay. All right. Don't think we had any, we did. Go ahead, I was gonna go on to six, do you want to do something about? Six, under quorum, absent an executive order or other order issued from the governor. Remember, the governor actually suspended the in-person quorum requirement, so we added that in there just in case that should occur. Moving down. No? Yes? Okay, want to go back? Okay, what would you like to go back to?
Is that statutory language?
What's that?
The executive order. Absent an executive order.
No, we did that because there was actually an executive order that specifically held that we did not have to have in-person quorum requirements. And that might be applicable to our most recent situation. But it was added as a, you know, there might be something that says we don't have to have an in-person quorum. But we can take it out if you would like.
I'm just wondering if it should be reworded.
Just starting with no, perhaps?
Well, I mean, we need to account for the ability to have virtual if allowed.
That's why we said executive order or other order, I don't know if there would be anyone beside the governor, perhaps the DOE.
State-directed, state-allowed, state-changes, I don't know.
It could be legislatively authorized in the next session, so.
And it could not be. It could not, maybe it's not an order, maybe it's something else.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Unless permitted by law.
I like.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you, John. I love my phone a friend.
Oh, that was John?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say that was awfully succinct. Oh, no, no, John, I actually meant for Amy.
It would be very succinct for me, yes.
That's why I was kind of surprised she came up with it.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I'd like to make sure Mr. Palmarini's saying by law is the only authority under which the board could have digital meetings?
Can we authorize?
I was gonna say unless otherwise authorized, but I want to know if it's only by law.
So I think the phrase by law will take care of it because if it's an executive order, especially if it's issued under the governor's emergency power that has the force and effect of law. And rules would have the force and effect of law too if they passed an administrative code rule that did the same thing. So I think that phrase would cover it.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Say, half of the board got COVID and was under quarantine, or was exposed and was under quarantine, but we had a board meeting come up. And we don't have the majority present, what happens?
We don't have a meeting.
You can have a meeting, but you would not be able to take any official action. So if you're gonna like adopt minutes or approve contracts, you would have to wait till there's a quorum physically present to do so.
So there would be no circumstance where the board could make a temporary rule for that meeting?
No, because the in-person, the physical quorum requirements have not changed. Even though there's language that, you know, sometimes allows advisory committees to meet virtually, the in-person quorum requirement has not changed yet.
That needs to go on our legislative platform.
It should be. I understand it's on the legislative platform for some of the other districts already, so.
That does need to go on.
So, Miss, Member Felder.
Thank you, I just want to make, be clear on that. So if in the event, as a board member, Gould shared that half of the board got COVID or some vicious disease, we couldn't come in, then we could not transact any business that required votes. We could still meet.
Yes.
But we, anything voting on this or that, we could not trans, okay, I think that works. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, and by statute, you're only required to have one board meeting a month. We just happen to have two, and most other districts happen to have two. So a lot of boards, there are some boards that meet once a month. I'm not recommending that, that's not. But it's like, well, we have one in December and one in usually July, so.
So Ms. Enval, if we can go to number 10.
Yes.
Conduct at meeting.
Yes.
The public shall be informed that it's unlawful to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a board meeting. I always notify the board of the protocols. They're not policies, but the protocols for behavior in the meeting. I don't announce that it's unlawful. I would prefer most of the time not to start with that tone at a meeting. But it occurs to me that if we're gonna keep this language, we should have something on, some way of notifying people if this language is gonna be here. Whether that's a handout or something, I don't know. But it does say, the board, the public shall be informed.
It is, it is a misdemeanor, right? So we could add that to the bottom of our meeting notice, perhaps?
That could be, because if we make it a speaker's card issue, which we could do that as well, a lot of people come and don't speak. But while I can understand that there would be sometimes when that might seem helpful, I think most of the time it's very off-putting and we try very hard in most of our meetings to make sure the public knows that we welcome them being here. We give them an outlet to express themselves, and I've found that that works pretty well. And this approach, I don't think would, so let's find another way to do that.
And I could also add it to the, you could, we could add language to your script at the bottom. So then in the event that you needed it, you had it to read out.
In the event that I need it, yes, okay, yes, exactly.
Madam Chair, you weren't saying to take the language out here, though, were you?
No, I'm saying, I think we should keep the language, but we're not doing this right now, we're not informing them.
Where can we?
And I would prefer to not be obligated to start every meeting with that information, but I want us to comply. And that way, by having this also in the event that I need to publicly inform them, it's also consistent with our policy. I agree with keeping it in.
About, would you like it on the signs that are posted outside?
That would be, that's not a bad idea, yeah, because Amy was saying on our meeting notice, but a lot of people don't necessarily see that, so just work on having it.
We will work on something procedurally.
I think a lot of people show up that have never read the agenda.
And we could actually cite the statute.
But that's not, but you know what, that's not our responsibility to make sure everybody reads it. It's our responsibility just to comply with the policy. Okay, yes.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Member Castor-Denial.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does this policy, since it's written in this conduct at meetings, does it also apply to the public input, period? Is that considered a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good. It might also need to be included in just that public input area as well, because people might see it separate.
Because these are separate policies that you're advising, so you're saying, copy the conduct, copy this paragraph. The other thing that I added here too is we have Board Policy KFA, which actually is titled, I think, Public Conduct at School Board Functions or on School Board Property. I'd have to look back and look at the policy, but we have that and that language is already, the same conduct at meeting is already in there, there's a whole provision about disruptions of meetings. We're gonna have, staff is already starting to look at that to bring you some proposed revisions to tighten that up a little bit. And to me, that's where you would probably recommend that we add in actual code of civility into the policy, even though it's referenced a lot, but we could actually add it into Board Policy KFA there as well.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. I know that guns are not allowed on school campuses. And I know they're not allowed in this room. Are they allowed in our parking garage here?
I don't think so, I think, I think our policy specifically prohibits them.
Hang on a second, though, statutorily, I don't think you're allowed to.
You can, as long as you put it in policy that you specifically prohibit it.
Really? John, when you could, would you share with me that statute?
Yes.
And maybe that's, is that different for counties? I mean, we literally had to allow people with guns come into our building. They could come any place except for a meeting. They could come up to my office with a gun. I mean, if they had a license to carry, we chaperoned them, but we couldn't stop them. Wow, I mean, I'm glad, I think it's how it should be, I just, when that, when that bill came out, whenever that was in 20, what, 11, 12? I don't know, you know what it was, it was right after Gabby Gifford had been shot so devastatingly, the little girl died, it was right after, it was that same session. Back to Member Castor-Denial, I'm so sorry, Member Castor-Denial.
No, it's okay, because it does raise questions. And does, does it matter if it's a concealed weapon, like a licensed concealed weapon, are they allowed to have that?
So there are exceptions in the policy, and I'm gonna wait till John pulls it up. But as I recall, there's exceptions in the policy that specifically are for law enforcement, they're permitted to carry. And the concealed weapons, I don't think.
Or other weapons.
Or other.
Tasers, knives.
Just so I'm clear what we're waiting, are we waiting for John to look up the policy or the statute?
The statute.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and we'll come back to you, Member Castor-Denial, thank you.
You can go on, he'll interrupt when we have it, sorry.
Thank you.
And Member Gallo, I'm putting you in the queue. I've got two, three speakers ahead of you, but thank you for chiming in. Anything else, Member Castor-Denial, while we're waiting for that? Okay, Member Lopez.
So on the, on the conduct, a meeting, the 14, so is that include the threats to other individuals and threats to us? Because I think that, you know, it's not fair for our constituents to come here and not feel safety because if other people is just threatening them because they don't think the same way they are thinking, that's, you know, and they are talking about the First Amendment, and they are not following it at all. What are we gonna do with that? Because I don't think that the person who was showing, and I don't know if I can say this, but showing a black flag, you know, in the middle, that person needs to be out immediately. I don't have to feel unsafe.
So we have down in Board Policy BEDH, which is your public input and public comment, there are some comments that have been added that would address that, if you want to wait till we get there or if you want to see what that says.
So we can include that in BDA?
It's in BEDH, I think we're still on BE.
So I think, if I can clarify, I think the purpose of this being here, because it kind of crosses over with the other. The purpose of this is that this is what we have to do at the meeting, we have to inform the public. And now, in the separate section, we'll get to what the public can and can't do.
So this one is only for informing?
This is our responsibility to inform them, but when we talk about our code of civility and behavior and guns and all that, that's in a different, that's in a different policy.
So the.
Does that make sense? Because I was getting confused myself, why are we here and not there?
So KFA, KFA is for code of civility.
That would be the recommendation, to add the code of civility into that policy because that one specifically governs conduct on school board property by the public.
And also the behavior of other individuals cursing at front of children and all of that is in BEDH as well?
It's, there is some of that in BEDH about being civil and not calling people out, yeah, BEDH.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
And this, back to 10, where we are right now, it's called conduct at meeting. That might not be the best name for it because we're not so much discussing the conduct as informing the public of consequences of conduct. And we use very broad terms like disrupt or interfere. I'm okay with that as long as when we get to the appropriate policy, we've defined what disrupt and interfere looks like. And maybe there's another term that should be in here if it's truly unlawful, and that is harass, intimidate members of the public. Because they might not be disrupting the meeting, but they might be harassing an individual. I sure saw that via video, thank you very much for sending that. Yes, Member Lopez.
So on the conduct at meeting, we cannot include the consequences? Just inform what is unlawful?
So this section right here is just about us informing the public. This is what we have to do. We have to inform the public, either I have to, or the superintendent has to inform the public that there are consequences.
When you inform, can you inform the consequences or not?
I think we'll probably get into the consequences when we get into this, to this, the subject of what their behavior is and what the consequence. Here, we're just informing them that they would be in violation. In a separate section, we'll talk about what the consequences of those viola, what are those violations and what are the consequences? Okay? But I think, is there support for? Okay, I have to let, Member, okay, Member Gould has jumped on and off, Member Byrd, but I have to go to Member Gallo. But question, are we okay with putting in here harass, intimidate, along with interfere? Okay, okay. All right, Member Gallo, thanks. All right, Member Gallo, thanks for your patience.
That's fine, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, I was, I was just, most of my questions have already been answered, but I was just going to say that there is a carve-out for schools on the guns. So in statute, you're not allowed to bring guns on any school campus, including the parking lot. And that, and I don't, and it just pertains to school, anywhere else, including the Capitol, you can bring a gun if you have a concealed weapon. But the only other people that are allowed to have a concealed carry on school grounds is a guardian, and that's, that's per statute.
Thank you, Member Gallo, that's what John told me, but I appreciate you clarifying, it's because of the sanctity of schools, which I, yeah, it makes all the sense in the world. Member Bird, oh, Member, okay, how did you jump in?
Just for the statutory reference on that, it's seven ninety point zero six, and it says, a concealed weapons license issued does not authorize any person to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm into any of the following. Any meeting of a government body on a, of a county, public school district, municipality, or special district, any school, college, or professional athletic event, any elementary or secondary school facility or administration building. So they have made it very widely applicable to all of our facilities.
Totally, thank you so much, John. Member Gold, then Member Bird, Member Gold, Vice Chair?
We can keep mine up there, but it's more for, oops, sorry. It's more for the BEDH discussion.
Member Bird.
I was just going to suggest that maybe titling it notification of misconduct at meeting.
That sounds so much better than what I, what I, whatever it was, I came up with that long-winded thing, thank you. And that so much more describes what this is, and I think just that alone would have cut down a lot of our confusion. Ms. Enval, I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay. So, moving on to Board Policy BEC, this is executive sessions and closed sessions, what I added was a title for A and a title for B, since they are two separate things, collective bargaining, closed sessions are permitted, and then security and fire safety sessions, closed sessions are permitted. And then we went on to, how can these be called? I added this on my own as a recommendation, so I just want to make sure you are all okay with it. Similar to the way that a special meeting can be called, it can be called, closed sessions for collective bargaining or security can be called by the chair, the superintendent, and/or upon direction of five board members who notify the superintendent individually, is that?
I agree.
I have that up for discussion for you all.
Anybody disagree? No, I like the consistency, Member Castor-Denno.
I like the wording, does this include emergency meetings?
So this, this, this is specifically a closed session for security or fire safety, if we go back up or down, I'd have to see. I'm not sure, if you'll bear with me for a minute, I don't know if it's in B. Here, it's here. Special meetings, it's in Policy BE. Special meetings shall be held at the time designated by the superintendent, board chair, or when called by a majority of the school board members, or board members as specified in written notice, so if you want the language to be the same, we can do that. Special meetings, and we could actually add an emergency meetings if you wanted to as well.
I think to be specific is helpful, because there's so many different kinds of meetings, an emergency meeting is a different.
It is different animal than a closed meeting or an executive session.
I see in the writing it says, or when called by a majority of the school board members as specified in written notice.
Right.
So how are we to notify other members, like what's that process? You know, like if one person wants to suggest it, other people want to, you know, weigh in?
And you can't all call each other and do that, so I think then we would go down to that other language that I've added in yellow, based on conversations and/or I've had with each of you independently, or upon the direction of five board members who notify the superintendent individually, because I think that's what it is, no?
No, I, well, that still sounds like five board members have to initiate on their own and come to the same conclusion at the same time without talking.
To each other.
To each other, so is there a way that superintendent and general counsel can poll the, the members? And say there has been a suggestion for an emergency meeting for this topic, are you?
We can't, we can't poll you.
And that's, this is where it gets touchy, because it's still.
We can't say that member so-and-so has asked for a, a special meeting on pink elephants.
Why not?
Because then we're, because then we're going to, then we're acting as the conduit in between each of you so that you can all talk to each other.
But we're not talking about substance. We're not coordinating, it's just.
You're still talking about something you're going to vote on, and I think the law doesn't, doesn't give you that latitude. You can't talk about anything you're going to vote on, you're going to vote on whether or not we have a meeting, that's where it gets dicey. So for instance, remember we were at a meeting here, and you wanted to have mandatory masks, and I wanted to have mandatory mask, and we opened it up to discussion, and Member Bird did, but we only had three of us, and so I had told everybody, let the superintendent know if we, if anybody else decides that they do, because if we get to the point where there's five of us, we can come back and have an emergency meeting, or just give the superintendent direction and not have an emergency meeting. But we were at a board meeting when we had that conversation, the problem we run into is using Ms. Enval as a surrogate to find out if there's five votes, and then to come back and vote, you can't call me directly, you can't use her as a, as a surrogate either, because it's still something we have to vote on, that was the problem I had when you, when you emailed me, I wanted to respond back, actually, I thought we were going to have an emergency meeting, but anyway, that's another story. But I couldn't email you back, because I was thinking about it, I thought we're not going to vote on the, whether we have a meeting, and then I remembered, no, we could vote on whether or not we have a meeting.
What if not all members of the board are aware of the need for an emergency meeting? What if one board member has information?
Can, let me offer a suggestion, and, and you can tell me, we did this at the county, there, you could put something out saying, I want to do something, you couldn't take something back in.
You can't have that, that inner, that, that exchange of ideas.
But what would prevent Member Castor-Denno from sending out an email and send it, whatever, to you or the superintendent, saying, I would like to propose a special meeting or an emergency meeting on X? And you then communicate that, you're not polling, but if there are four other members that then communicate to you, I want to have that too, I want to have that too, you're not acting as a surrogate, it's not a vote, and it's not actually a vote until we come here.
Well, how else can you call an emergency meeting?
I, I haven't, in, in all of my local government experience, I've never had multiple members. It's usually been a meeting that's been called by the chair, the commissioner, or the superintendent.
And can I answer that question?
Yes.
It, usually what you would do is you would be in this setting, we would all be sitting here, you would be wanting something, and the superintendent's not scheduling it, I'm not scheduling it, and you say, I'm going to make a motion that we have an emergency meeting. And if you get a second, you get the five votes, that's typically how it works. The problem is, if it's really an emergency and you have to wait in the next weeks, and the meeting is two weeks away, it doesn't work very well for emergency meetings, it works better for regular meetings.
What if we call it an impromptu meeting?
No, 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 I mean, it's just, it doesn't work for emergencies, because if it's an emergency, you have to wait for the next meeting.
Right, that is the, that's the problem.
Yes, that's the problem.
But, I'm sorry, but if she did that, because she, if, and I understand, if she's at a meeting with all of the board members, could she then, when she makes the suggestion, a move that we have an emergency meeting, could she also include in that motion, the date, like next Monday, a move we have a meeting, we're all here?
Of course.
Could it work that way, since we can't call each other individually?
Yes, it can happen here at the dais easily.
Because I think that's what happened with that mask situation, I think, but go ahead, okay.
Okay, all right, we have a little work to do.
We do, work to do.
Oh, because we know we could put it in here, how exactly to facilitate it is the challenging part, I don't think, we have the answers. We'll let, let legal counsel think through other options. Whether the one I suggested is viable or not, I don't know, I know we occasionally did this at the county, and. All right, Member.
Can I just clarify, just so I know, is the direction to add special or emergency meetings in, in our Board Policy BE, which is school board meetings, we just had special meetings, but now we're going to talk, I mean, you can call it special, you can call it emergency, I mean.
Emergency is a special meeting, correct?
It is.
So why don't you say special, including emergency, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, let me go back to Vice Chair.
So, um, as far as I know, everything you just described was practiced, we got an email, there was a call of notification that I got from the superintendent, and no other board members acted on that, because we, for me, we had a meeting coming up, and I felt we needed the data from the community before we call a meeting of, prior to the date that we had it, so I'm not sure we're not already practicing everything that you just described.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not really sure I know what you're talking about.
So when, in recent history, when there was a request for an emergency meeting, there was an email we received, there was a call that we got, letting us know there was interest in that, and no one else, well, I don't know that, but obviously, five people did not take that call up to exercise and say, and put that request in writing to the superintendent or you for an emergency meeting.
Are we going back to, are we going back to July twenty-seventh?
No, I don't remember the date.
Okay, when we were here, and Member Castor-Denno.
She requested at the, you requested at the board meeting?
Yes, that did happen.
We got an email, and, and then there was a subsequent call, at, at least to me, by the superintendent, to notify me that there was this request.
Okay.
And so I'm not sure we're not already practicing the ability to call that meeting, but there may not be the reaction to it that whoever is requesting it.
I, I understand, the, the reality is, the policy didn't say that before.
Gotcha.
And the superintendent, what she wanted was, she wanted confidence that the majority of the board was with her. But if we put it in policy, let's say the superintendent doesn't want that, as chair, I can call a meeting, but I don't want that, and there has to be a way for this board to get around the superintendent and me, it's not personal, but I've been on the other side of this, where I wanted something on the doggone agenda, I couldn't get it on the agenda, and I felt like I should have the right to try. So I want you all to have the right to try.
Yep.
So we are codifying this, that, that nobody, that there's no two people, there's no one person that can block you.
Right.
Okay, good. Now, I'm going to go to Member Bird, and then I think Member, Vice Chair had something on a different matter, Member Bird.
Um, I think you just, I think you just clarified it for me, because I was just going to say that, though I think that we're fine now, because we have a superintendent that we completely, fully trust, that if, if I bring a request to her, she's going to check to see if there's other board members, that may not always be the case, and we may not feel if, if a board member brings a request to the superintendent, it may not get around to all eight board members, so I definitely think there needs to be some kind of procedure where, like what you said, where we should be able to, if, if it's an emergency, needs to be done before a meeting, that we could, some way. Pull, yeah, call, call a meeting, or at least communicate somehow with board members that's not in violation of sunshine.
Yeah, I, I agree, we just have to give legal a little bit of time and space to figure that out, and then if we want to put that in policy, that process, that may help, I don't know, but we'll come back, we'll come back to that, that isn't, we're not, I'm not disregarding that at all. To you, Vice Chair?
Well, I think we're getting to the BEDH, thank you.
Yeah, okay, okay.
BEDH, next, are we done with this one? So I, I may have missed it, but I did not read anywhere in the BEDH where we authorize our own police force to act on our behalf.
I think that's an operational decision, and I think that's implicit.
Well, it may be implicit, but I'm not sure it shouldn't be.
In policy.
At least identified, that we have that resource at our disposal.
Can you clar, I'm, I'm sorry to be a little dense, can you clarify what you mean by to act on our behalf?
That, that they have the legal authority of being our law on site, this is not well thought out, so you're hearing, you're hearing the sausage being made in my head, but, but that we have a, a police force that is at the, at the service of the superintendent and the board, and has the authority to, you know, on direction, remove people, shut down the meeting, if they feel we're in, in harm's way in any way, that they can clear the room, that there's a way to communicate with you as the chair, whoever's sitting in the chair, to say, we think you need to stop the meeting, I, I, I think we need to, anyway, it may not need to be that level of detail, but that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking to show that we have this force at our disposal, and it is identified, and that they can even take somebody into custody while we, we pass them on to the, to whatever municipality we're in, because if we're at a school site, it would be a different municipality than the sheriff, or OPD.
Yeah, okay, so an idea of what that would look like, Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so our law enforcement agency is duly authorized, they are sworn officers with, yes, sworn officers, they are, they do have authority to make arrests, we don't have a holding cell, they would have to ask a law enforcement agency to take someone actually to jail, but they are duly authorized sworn officers with that authority, but you, you make an important point, because people may assume, because they're OPD police officers, that they don't have that authority. Whether or not policy somehow conveys that, or informs the public, I, I'll leave that to Ms. Enval, but they are sworn officers with every authority, except we don't have a holding cell.
And, and my concern is especially after the accelerated behavior we recently saw, is that people don't really understand their authority, and I want it to be clear to our force that if they feel there is a danger, they don't need to wait for us, they need to act. So, because they can often hear and see things we can't, going on in the room, outside the room, and we may need to take a break and just get things back in order, and even eject people if that's the case. So I just, I, if we need to put it into a, into one of our policies, I just want to make sure that it's clear and that it gets trained upon that way.
Got it, I will tell you that, that there is communication between our law enforcement and me, and that we have established, and I think one of the things I would like us to do, we haven't done it in a while, we only have done it once since we've all been here, and that is another mock emergency, and, and I would like to see us hold a special meeting on the subject of security.
That would be a closed session under the policy you just revised.
Yeah, and it should be, because I don't want to go into too much detail about what we do have in place, but the board needs to be, needs to know and be comfortable, so I think we need to schedule that. In fact, Ms. Enval and I had that conversation just earlier today on my way in here, so. No, that's a different issue, and that's a different issue, that goes to the notice, and I agree with you. It's one thing, even if we put it in the policy, that doesn't necessarily mean they know it, but it is important for them to know that, as a deterrent. As a deterrent. So I'm going to leave Dr. Jenkins, you and Ms. Enval, hopefully to come back with, to us with a way of making sure that we communicate to the public in an appropriate fashion, that we do have our own police force, that they're duly authorized to take action on their own as needed to maintain peace and safety of everyone in the building, okay.
Madam Chair, we have a comment from Mr. Palmarene.
Mr. Palmarene, do we have a statutory provision that tells us we can't keep people safe?
Oh, no, 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 you do, and what I was going to say, it's eight seventy-seven thirteen, it's the statute that delineates the penalties for disrupting a school board meeting, and I just wanted you to be. And I just wanted you to be aware, um, there is a provision of Florida law that says by publication of a statute in the, uh, statutory books, every citizen in the state of Florida is presumed to have constructive knowledge of the statute. So, that's the, "I can't plead ignorance as a defense of the law," um, that you've heard before. So, they by notice, by putting it in a statute like that, every member of the public has noticed.
Wow, that's very interesting. Um, and to, to Vice Chair's point, though, um, the, the knowledge of the role of our police force is, it act, could act hopefully as a deterrent, and so I think that, I think that is important. I'm just not su, I think we need you guys to come back with us with suggestions of how we do that, again, in an appropriate fashion. So, we don't wanna be off putting ninety, ninety-nine point nine percent of our citizens that come here, come here in good faith, maybe passionate, but in good faith. And, um, we don't, certainly don't wanna create the wrong environment, but let's go, um, on to Member Lopez.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, also, can we include the, the hallways as well? Because I think that sometimes we're allowing people to get inside the boardroom, even though they're having a very, um, inappropriate behavior. I think that is not safe for our children, is not safe because we have a lot of minor here. They're not, um, having, you know, any, uh, a good behavior, you know, so I think that we should include some, something about the outside, that person is not allowed to get inside, because we already know what is gonna happen with that person is getting into the meeting. Can we do that?
I'm, I'm going, uh, in my, in my thought processes, we started at the top, I think that the district police, in my mind, we're gonna make a separate section at the bottom that will encompass all of that, if that helps.
Yes, does, thank you. Um, Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a question about who is the lead law enforcement agency here at the building on those nights where we have meetings and we also bring in O P D?
The individual or, oh, I'm see, which agency has, that's a great question. We are?
Does that mean that, um, if O C P S police force, um, they can direct O P D or can O P D act independently?
We'll have a mutual aid agreement with them, which I believe we already do. I don't think Chief Holmes is here, but, um, we have mutual aid agreements and actually we can bring them in, uh, for a number of different reasons.
And maybe that's part of that, um, can we cover that while we have a security briefing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Member Bird.
I was just gonna note on what, um, Member Lopez said, maybe we could have a statement that says, um, we refuse the right of access to the boardroom to any member who shows misconduct in the lobby.
Violating our policies in the lobby, yeah. And that would take care of, um, harassment, intimidation, um, those types of behaviors. If you're not allowed to do it in the boardroom, you're not gonna have entrance to the boardroom if you're violating those policies in the lobby.
On property.
On property, yeah. I like that, that's.
Madam Chair.
Member Castor Dental.
Um, when you say on property, does that also include, um, not just the garage, but the front, but the outside by Amelia Street on the brick? Okay.
It does, in my opinion, that's our property, that's, and that's gonna be important. Okay.
So, I think part of this too, just as a, uh, jumping in here, I think part of this goes into the potential revisions of policy case, K F A. I don't know necessarily if they go in this B E D H, which governs public input, but I think we can do a reference to K F A, and I know staff is already working on, um, evaluating those with, um, and it's gonna be a, it's a a multi-departmental review.
All right, Ms. Enville, back to you.
So, we're going back to, I just wanted to make sure I got here, 'cause I added some yellow stuff here that I wanted to make sure the board had a discussion about. Things have changed since you had your, uh, March 23rd work session on these last, uh, that was your third work session on these policies, and now that you've had a chance to experience some, um, other things, um, I thought that it might be prudent for you to talk about some of these other things that might help you. Um, it's, it's important to know that although the, um, section 288.0114 requires that members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to hear on a proposition before a board or commission, the opportunity to hear doesn't have to happen at the same meeting. But, um, it's important to know that you have, although the statute's supposed to be liberally, liberally construed, um, the public's opportunity to hear doesn't apply in certain circumstances, and the statute does, however, uh, allow, and it's subject to the rules or policies adopted by the board as in that section. So, what we're talking about now is limiting the time, manner, and place of the, of that public input. And so, that's kind of where we are when it comes to this particular policy, and the statute is referenced down below in the specific authority. So, we had already talked about dividing it up into a public input period, which is pre-agenda, and that's your subsection one. And then also, I'm gonna go back up, so don't worry, and a public comment period for items on the agenda, which is your subsection two. So, public input, public comment, totally different things. Um, what's really important to note, your pre-agenda public input period that we're gonna talk about now and that that's going to be known as, it is not required by law. You could get rid of it completely. I think it originally came up, I would be, uh, have to defer to Dr. Jenkins, but I believe it was under Chair Sablet that it broadened as a means by which the public could come in and talk to things that are not on the agenda. Hey, I'm really worried about, you know, this or, or those kind of things. And it was a means to start the dialogue with the board and see if the board wanted something else. You know, to bring something that could come for them, whatever, but it was a public forum that was open for the public to come in and talk. So, I wanted to make sure that you understood that it is your decision right now. If you don't wanna do public in, there are public input period, it's not required by law, it's just something that we do. And because of that, 'cause it's not a proposition or, um, action before the board, um, you have limited it to thirty minutes, which I think is reasonable. Um, and so, I wanted to, the addition that I made in subsection, well, in subsection A, it just looks a little weird until you take away the red lines. But specifically putting in policy that it's not required by law, but it's rather provided as a means by which the public can address the board on topics that are not on the agenda. And so, I don't know if we wanna talk about whether the board wants to keep this in there, or if we would just assume that you do and we can move on.
Member Felder.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think we need to keep, uh, that policy in place, because we are elected by constituency. They elected us because they believed that we could be their voices, and some things that they have, uh, concerns about, we may not ever, may not ever get on the agenda, because there may be other business that we need to attend to that's, um, that's, uh, uh, important. And we just may not have the time to do all of that. So, I think that we need to allow the public who has elected us the opportunity to express their concerns. Um, now, the timing, I know everybody wants to be able to express how they feel. Um, but if we, you know, I wish we could let everybody talk, but, uh, we would probably be here when you also have those marathon, boy, I remember coming to board member meetings years ago, when Katie Kegler was sitting up here, Adams, and it'd be ten, eleven o'clock. You know, you all get out, I said, "Jesus, I'm not gonna run for school board member." But anyway, I'm here. But I, 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 that could be debatable about the time, or, I don't know, maybe just one meeting just for public input. Just have at it, you know, for, we have like, board meetings gonna be from six to eight. I got two hours, just whatever. But I do believe that we should keep, uh, this policy in place to allow our public, our constituency to share with us, you know, some of their feelings, and we just listen. So, they can know that we are at least in tune to their concerns, because after all, they elected us. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Covert.
Thank you. I, I concur with Member Felder. Uh, this was something that was very important to me, to press the easy button for the public, to have access to us, to bring up any topic that they want to bring in front of us. Sometimes they need to bring something to our attention, be it good or bad. And, and what we've seen over this past year is an anomaly, it is not normally, um, this way. So, we need to bear that in mind, that this gives easy access to the public, to their elected officials. So, I feel strongly that, uh, the public input period remain.
Thank you. Um, my thoughts on this, I, you all know, I had fought hard to get this on the ballot at the county so that public, the public would have an opportunity. Um, we limited it also to thirty minutes. We did put more, more restrictions in than what I see here. Um, a couple of things, and if, this is little, a little thing, but I, I think it should only be matters that, um, pertain to Orange County Public Schools. Sounds like a crazy thing, but we had people come, tried to talk about all kinds of things that they just wanted to rant about. And that took away from, and we limited it generally to thirty minutes, and that took away from time that people that wanted to speak to something germane. So, I would have the language, um, in there, that it needs to be germane to the business of O C P S, or I don't wanna call it business. The other, um, the other things, we did have the ability to shorten the amount of time if we had numerous speakers. Um, we had that ability both on our regular agenda and on our public comment. Speakers that were coming, uh, over and over again to speak about something that was going to be scheduled for a future meeting, we didn't permit that. We didn't, we didn't wanna have a hearing over and over and over again, um, on something that was controversial that they knew was coming up in four weeks, thinking that, you know, just, it was just not a productive use of their time or the board's time. And again, it interfered with other people who might have something that they didn't get to speak to. In terms, so, those were, um, issues that were coming up at a, anticipated to be coming up in the near future, that you would speak to it at that meeting, not prior to the meeting. Um, one of the things I heard, other, another jurisdiction doing, I don't, is something to consider. I think that we've all said that we don't wanna limit people's right to speak to being, um, necessarily a citizen of Orange County. But do we wanna prioritize the right to be heard to someone who does live in Orange County if we have three times as many speakers? Should we hear first from those who, um, I wanna say have skin in the game here in Orange County? And so, I think that's something to give some thought to. And, um, those are some of the things that I think would be worth exploring, whether we can reach some agreement on those different issues, and, and I certainly don't think I've thought of all of them, it's just a couple of things that came to mind. Um, and then there's also if it's the same thing over and over again, if the same person is present or calling, and we have other people. I saw it, I saw it last meeting in particular, there were a lot of people that never got to speak. A lot of people don't know those rules. So, um, let me go to Member Covert. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have some of the same issues or concerns. Um, I'm not looking at the individual lines of this policy, but I'll just give you my thoughts on different ones. Um, the, the term germane topics is not like a commonly used word. And if we're, if this is for the benefit of the public, is it possible to maybe define germane? Um, I mean, you can tell by the context clues what it means, but I think to be more explicit in what that means. Pardon? Relevant topics or things that are, are outlined in the agenda, yeah, okay. And then, um, also to follow up on what the Chair mentioned about, um, people who come to speak, if maybe on the, the speaking speaker cards, if there's a box that they could check that they're a student or a parent, um, an employee, um, or an Orange County resident or other, that might be able, a, a simple way to prioritize the speakers. And then I had a question about on this, on the sign-up cards or the speaker cards, if they need to complete a mailing address, is that just for contact information, or do we need like the residence?
Historically, that's just been an operational thing for, for contact purposes, I think. Um, like if, if, you know, you, if it's a topic they bring up that you want Dr. Vasquez or somebody to contact, you know, we need to be able to, to get back in contact with them, not, not go, "Hey, the third speaker, could you give us your address?" You know? So, it's been a method by, just to reach out to that person.
Okay, I wonder if we should, um, also get a, an ID or, or if that's too much information.
So, requiring an ID might run you into some legal challenges, 'cause public is allowed to attend, and even if they're doing, signing up to speak, I, we're not gonna validate whether or verify that they live at that particular address.
Okay. I wouldn't, uh, be asking to prevent them from speaking, just that we had a accurate, um, address is all.
And sometimes we have an issue where we can't read what they wrote to.
Sometimes.
Maybe they could spell their names phonetically for the Chair. Anybody.
Anything.
That's, um, oh, and one more thing is when we talk about people who call in versus people who attend in person, um, I think they should be treated equally, because some people just can't attend because of childcare or transportation or fear of intimidation or for health and safety reasons, that, that's maybe why they didn't attend. So, taking calls and, I don't know if we should have a preference over which way they wanna share their information. That's all.
So, so just to, to that point, there's no requirement that you, uh, offer calling in as an, as a, an accommodation. I know we did for COVID, but there's no legal obligation unless the board wants to continue that. So, if you wanna go through, I think a lot of the things that you've said, I've already captured in the proposed revisions, and they're in yellow, so if you wanna go through those, unless you have other people that wanna talk first, and then we can.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
That might help us. Let me just run through real quickly. Um, Member Bird, I'm sorry, Member Gallas on the line. Okay, Member Bird.
Um, thank you. I was just going to agree with the suggestion of prioritizing, um, the speakers for sure, because, uh, I certainly would want students who show up and parents, I would think, to be, um, first priority. I love the idea of having checkboxes on the cards that they fill out, so we know, um, because there's been a few instances, I think, where, um, parents have not been able to speak on other issues they probably really needed to hear, because, um, people from Volusia County were here on a political topic. So, um, I really like that idea. I'm, I'm a little concerned, I like the idea of limiting time too, if we have too many speakers, but, um, with having the limits that, that are put in here, proposed in here, zero to twenty speakers allotted three minutes each, twenty speakers at three minutes would be sixty minutes, right? So, we wouldn't even go to sixty minutes, really, ever, do we, ever? Right, so. Oh, wait, this is agenda. Okay, wait, no, 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 sorry. Sorry.
So, we do have the two, we have the pre-agenda, and then we haven't even gotten into the items that are on. I mean, the pre-agenda, you've limited to thirty minutes, so you could, we, realistically, we could have, well, I don't know if you'd have thirty people speaking at a minute each, but we usually have just given them three minutes, but if they do less, sometimes you'll get in, I, a couple of the past meetings, we've gotten in ten or twelve speakers, because they've only spoken for, for a minute or, you know, less than.
Okay. Um, is, but there's nothing in here about limiting the time, right? Is that in there?
Under the public input period, which is your pre-agenda in subsection one, I did not have any limits in there. Because you only have thirty minutes.
Right, but I mean.
But we could add.
But there, it, I thought there was, I thought there was something that said that the Chair could, could, um,
Is it there?
Allow shorter amount of time to allow more speakers. I thought originally we did have something like that in there.
But we, so we could allow, um, if we have more than ten speakers, that we could reduce the amount of time, still thirty minutes, but reduce it to two minutes per speaker. So, more people can speak.
Like a tiered approach, kind of, or a, like a graduate approach, like I've actually done in the second part, if you want that for, you're, you're saying to add a, add the, the ability to limit the time in pre-agenda as well.
So, a question for you, Member Bird, um, just as a starting point with you. Do we go down to one minute, or is one minute too short of a period of time to give people an opportunity to communicate? So, I think it would make sense that we say if there's more than ten speakers, we're gonna limit it, because that's gonna going to limit it, because that's going to allow a few more people to two minutes. Do we say if there's more than, well, if everybody took, I should be able to do that?
I think we could just put a, yeah, couldn't we just leave it up to the Chair, at her discretion?
You could, section three, if you want to look at it, I put it up on the board there, allotted time for speakers. A is during the public input period, which is your pre-agenda period, and I could put during public input period during pre-agenda, so that way it's clear. Each speaker shall have up to three minutes to address the board within the thirty minutes allowed for public input period. So you, you're, you're saying maybe do a graduated approach there, too. If you look at B, during the public comment period, which is regular agenda items, you don't, you don't have limits on, you can, we can limit in time manner and place, but if you have three hundred people that show up, they all get a chance to speak, but it has to be in your policy how you're going to limit that time. During your public input period during pre-agenda, you have it already limited to thirty minutes, because that's not required by law. I don't know if I explained myself well enough.
Can I, clarification question there? So on A, which is going to say public input period during pre-agenda meeting, maximum of thirty minutes, then are you saying that we would need to say in here that, how we're going to allow that time to be used, like we did below? Or can we say up to three minutes per speaker, but maybe less depending upon the number of speakers?
We could do that.
Would we be that vague?
I think it just, it just, I think it needs to be clear, so that everybody knows the rules coming in.
Right, here's the problem with the reality of that, is that nobody really knows the rules when they come in, even when we tell them. So let's say we tell them that it's three minutes maximum, and it might be less. Well, that doesn't really tell them how many minutes, because they don't know until they come in. If we tell them it's three minutes maximum, but they don't realize that they're not going to get to speak at all, even though we've told them, there's still no certainty. So this is, there, from experience, somebody, there's always, no matter what we do, there's going to be times when people don't understand the rules, don't agree with them, and aren't prepared to cut their remarks. They come, they've, I mean, I've done this, I have written out exactly what I was going to say, I got it right down. I mean, I remember vividly being on the other side of this dais, and then suddenly I'm told I have two minutes, and I'm like, I can't, I can't do this in two minutes, it doesn't make sense. So I understand that frustration, but I also understand the goal of trying to hear more people. And that's why I was thinking maybe two minutes, but one minute, can you really say much of anything if we cut it down to one minute? And can we make this decision now, or what is it going to take for us to land this plane?
So to land the plane, if you can give me some direction now, that would be great, unless you want to come back for another work session.
Can I take input from Member Covert?
Yeah, well, can I just make a comment about your one minute question?
Yeah.
At the State Board of Education meeting, they took minute comments and cut people off. So, I mean, it was, it was enough of, because it was on that one topic, it was enough where you got the gist of where they landed on the topic, you know what I mean?
I sure do. Okay, so Member Gould is next, I thought Member Covert had something specifically germane, she had to jump in, Member Gould, Vice Chair Gould, you're recognized. And then we'll go to Member Covert, Member Covert?
Something that is in.
On that specific issue? And then I think Member Gallo.
Just a suggestion, where it says shall have up to three minutes, you could add per en adjustable at the discretion of the Chair. And then it lands on a total of thirty.
Okay, and this, and the number of speakers?
Adjustable at the discretion of the Chair based on number of speakers.
Yes.
And it lands at a total of thirty minutes.
Yeah. I do want it to be abundantly clear that that is not a guarantee that everybody gets to speak. Okay.
Do you want to put that specifically in A?
I do.
Let's say there's, this, because this is not, you know, there's no guarantee, something about, right?
Because there's a time limit.
Uh huh.
For time sensitivity.
However, due to the thirty minute time constraint, there's no guarantee that all, all members of the public that wish to speak will have an opportunity to at that meeting. That's where emails are beautiful.
And Madam Chair, one of the logistics we were trying to work out for your pre-agenda meeting is when those individuals are coming in from the doorway, that they say we have, they just give out to the first twenty-five people, twenty people that are in line, and then after that, we don't have any, any further cards, because it's only a thirty minute period.
Except for even with that, we need to make sure that those twenty people know that it might be only ten of them that are speaking.
Correct, correct.
And if they, nevermind, I won't go there. Okay, Vice Chair.
So something else that you said, because I like the, the way that we're handling this and being able to adjust so more people can give their input, but you talked about relevancy to our scope and authority. How will we judge that relevancy, kind of, to our scope and authority? Because, and here's the example, because this comes up several times now, is critical race theory. Critical race theory is not something that we teach, nor is it in any of our curriculum or scope and authority, but it is something that keeps coming. Keeps coming and is being socially, social media motivated to, to come, so there's a lot of confusion out there about it. So how would we, how would we handle something like that? I mean, because I like the thought of, there's so many relevant things that come, whether it's about, you know, ESE, or some of our students who come, or, there's just so many relevant things and things we learned. Exactly, the ECGs, that we can and should be putting into the scope of our work, and we often have, as has been pointed out, these kind of repeat conversations, so that it can be socially media shared.
So one thing we could do with critical race theory, because it really isn't in our jurisdiction, even if we wanted to teach critical race, because we're banned legislatively from teaching it, we could, I could try to put a stop to that, if we had a policy that said that, so I could say it's not under our jurisdiction, it's banned by the state, we don't teach it, if there's anybody else on that subject. And maybe we could move off, off of that. She used the term germane, Member Bird thought germane wasn't, oh, Member Kestrel Dental, under the authority jurisdiction, relevant was the term we went to.
Relevant topics instead of germane?
So, yes, so here's, here's one, abortion. Texas, okay? No, I'm just saying, because honestly, you all don't see a lot of it, I'm used, I'm used to seeing whatever the, whatever the most controversial issue is, come speak to. So that's where I thought, I wasn't trying to make it so specific, but it has to be relevant to what we do here. The ECGs was very relevant. Discussing abortion, abortion laws in Texas is not relevant.
I really like the way that you described on how you would handle that, and, and I'm not saying it should be here, but maybe that is in the script that is memorialized a little bit, so that we're always saying it in the same way.
Talking about the.
You know, when, when we have our notes on things, just like that, that policy about, that we just discussed putting at the bottom, that, you know, the lawful behaviors. I, I think it helps if we are always consistent, whether you're absent and somebody's sitting in your stay, or there is somebody who sits in that chair next, that has consistency on how that's handled, because that can go off the rails really fast, when not handled in the right way. But if we are respectful and can say that's, you know, not in our scope and authority, or however, it's not relevant to the business that we have at this dais, or however we describe that, I think that's really helpful.
Okay, thank you. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was going to comment on the pre-agenda and the timeframe to allow more speakers. I think we've kind of worked it out, although I do believe at one time, when we were discussing the pre-agenda and how to maximize the amount of speakers that we could have during it, there'd been some discussion about, at the beginning of the meeting, like making a motion, or just announcing, okay, we usually give three minutes now, due to the amount of speakers that we have, an effort to hear everybody, we're limited to one minute, two minutes. So I think we've worked it out already, but I just wanted to say that I would support that, and I think that that's doable. They do it all the time up here in Tallahassee, they have a lot of speakers in effort to hear anybody, and I think that, as mentioned, I think by Member Bird, that if only allotted a minute, you can get a lot of words in, in, in one minute, and we could absolutely get the scope of what you're trying to say.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Member Gallo. Member Covert? Okay? Member Felder?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I was clear about the people coming in, I, you said something, no more than like twenty cards, but I don't know if I agree with that, because if people make an effort, they get off their jobs early, or whatever they need to do to get down here, and they're in line, everybody's in line at the same time, I know we can't hear everybody, I mean, it's kind of hard, but rather than put a limit on cards given out at the discretion of the Chair, when we reach like the, we see we got a hundred people, you know, we're not going to be able to hear a hundred people, we got thirty people, forty people. Then when she says that you have a minute, and once that minute is up, they know that when, even though we're giving them the card, you understand that there's a possibility that you may not speak, but I don't think we should not allow them to fill out the card. Because if they came down here, or if they come down here, we should give them the opportunity to fill out the card, and you know that it's a risk, because if there are twenty people ahead of you, or thirty, or whatever, you know that you may not speak, but give them the card, but to have them come and say, we're not, you know, well, we've got our limit, you can't get a card, uh-uh, I think we need to give them a card. Because sometimes people are sitting here, and they'll have ten people talking about the same thing, and people say, well, I yield my time, or I yield my time, you still can hear other people, but give them, if they come, give them the card, let them fill it out, and then at the discretion of our Chair, when we look at the, the amount of people that want to speak, and we're looking at our time, especially we got a heavy agenda, then give her that opportunity to say, now you'll have a minute to speak, because we want to hear everyone, but give, everybody comes out here, they want to speak, give them a card. That's, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, okay. I think that's good, Vice Member, I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, so if it, if it is an item on the agenda, we have to give out a hundred and fifty cards if that many show up, which I want to make sure we speak to, like we have when we do our rezoning, there's specific language there that says by a time certain, the meeting has to adjourn and then continue to the next day. Because we've heard of some meetings going on for fifteen, twenty hours, I think it's reasonable that you may want some time certain that the meeting has to end and then continue the next day. Not that you put out new speaker cards, but that you continue the next day, so people are actually at least coherent to listen, I want to make sure that that's a possibility. So, so agenda items, everybody gets to speak, nobody's going to stop handing out cards. What we were trying to stop was this furor over, let them all speak for pre-agenda, when we know we only have thirty minutes. So if you hand out seventy-five cards, and you know you're only going to get in about a dozen, they are mad when they come in here, and the Chair then says, we've got thirty minutes, three minutes each, clearly, she asks Amy usually, how many speaker cards do you have, and Amy says some ungodly number, she says, clearly there won't be enough time, the crowd gets upset. And so there has to be something perhaps on the cards for pre-agenda that says, more than likely.
We, we have added, the blue cards have been amended to specifically let the public know that it's only thirty minutes.
But I want to make sure Member Felder understood.
Right.
We got to, we have to listen to everybody for agenda items, that thirty minute period, I don't know how we stop people from feeling misled, that they fill out a card and we knew full well, we weren't going to have fifty people in a thirty minute time period. I don't know the answer to it, if it's already on the card, I apologize, Amy didn't realize, Ms. Enville, that it's already on the card. We were trying to deescalate that anger, as soon as she says we're not going to get to everybody, because they got their card in their hand and they think they're entitled to speak.
So if it's on the card, I'm good, but I do want, if people come, I want them to be, if they come, I want them to have that opportunity, and it's clear, you know, if it's a hundred people, you know, and you're the eighty-eighth person, you know you're not going to speak, that's clear. But we've given you the opportunity, we've been open to have, give you that opportunity, you just got to get it earlier.
So, a couple of thoughts on this, we, we need to put something bold on the card. I think we should not say that you're limited to three minutes, because that suggests you're going to get three minutes, you might come in here and you only get one minute. I think it should, a question, all this is based on people read it, but you'll, depending upon the number of speakers signed up, you'll have anywhere from one to three minutes to speak if, and this is where the if comes in, if you have a time to speak at all. I don't know, somehow if we put all that on the card. I will remind everybody that at the last meeting, I made it real clear that we had too many speakers, and there wasn't going to be time, and we allocate thirty minutes, I went through it, and I was, I was more clear than I've ever been before, because I recognized that there were some people I did not remember seeing in the chambers, they might not know, and that didn't change the fact that people, a couple of people were livid and felt deceived. So if we can write it on a card, we could have a loudspeaker out in the lobby, we could have big, bold signs, and we can have me saying it, I, there's no way to rule out the possibility that people are going to be confused, but whatever we can do to be as clear and transparent as we can be, I think we should try to be. Which brings me to a section in here that I was a little concerned about, it's under one B, under the public input, and it's about halfway down, it says, in the event of a disruption of this public input period, or in the event there are any safety concerns, the Board Chair may conclude the public period, public input period early, even if all speakers have not had an opportunity to speak. That, I just realized, is in the public input period in the regular meeting. That makes sense. I thought this also applied to pre-agenda, and I didn't, and that would lead me to believe that if there was no disruption, we would take all the speakers. So if you can work on the language on the card.
And I can send you the cards, I can't send to you now, I don't have my computer, but we, Deborah and I have been, we've been very, we've been amending it as needed.
Okay, and since we've just given you some new direction, that we could go down as, as short as a minute, and as long as three minutes, maximum of thirty minutes, and if we have more speakers than we can accommodate in thirty minutes, you will not have an opportunity to speak at this, at this meeting, you know, you may not have an opportunity to speak at this meeting, something like that. It's in writing, it's in their hands. They know it might be one minute, it might be three minutes. And it might be no minutes. Thank you, okay? Vice Chair?
So, yeah, you just articulated, so I'm going to highlight it. I think that if we put the time limit, and, and maybe spin it to a positive way, but it shows that it won't work, like, our, our board meetings stop at a time cer, or start at a time certain moment, whatever that is, and there is thirty minutes allotted for speakers. This may not allow for all to speak, something with a more positive spin than the, the negative spin, but using the time.
And then the language we used last time, in order to accommodate more speakers.
I don't even know that we put that on the card, because I think then you have the flexibility to be able to do that, because then, but if it says we only have thirty minutes, and then they come in, and you're saying, as you'll have seen on the card, we have thirty speakers today, everybody gets a minute.
What, where I was going with that is that we could say, in order to accommodate more speakers, the Chair may reduce the amount of time.
Yeah.
To one minute, or to, to.
May, may adjust time.
The amount of time to, yeah, to accommodate more.
I wouldn't put any expectation of minutes on it.
In the event, we.
Each speaker is held to thirty minutes, sorry.
No, each speaker is not held to thirty minutes.
Or three minutes. No, not thirty minutes, sorry.
That's what came out of your mouth, believe it or not.
I've got it, Amy.
Got it, thanks, all right.
Okay, I'm just going to highlight this and add a note to fix.
Add a note, Dr. Jenkins says she got it.
Got it.
Okay. Ms. Enville?
Can we go through?
Hang on, Dr. Jenkins? You recognize? Member Gallo, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a question regarding the speaker cards. Are they, are they subject to, um, Sunshine State, like, records request? If someone were to request, like, all of the speaker cards from the last board meeting, by law, do we have to give them to them?
Yes, and we have routinely received requests for them.
Is there anything on our speaker card that lets the individual know that this card is subject to records requests, that they know that their information may be given to a third party?
I don't think so. I don't have a copy of one of the cards before me, but we can certainly add that. We're, we're running out of space on our half-page speaker cards, but I can add that. Yeah, but any, anything we do would be subject, anything. Sorry.
You know, you've, I just, I know that I got a couple, uh, emails, um, from constituents who were concerned that their emails to me would be given over in a recent records request. And I informed them that anytime you email an elected official, that it is subjected, um, to a records request. So I think that the more information that we could give the public, so that they understand the process, the, the better off that, um, they will be. I think they need to understand, um, that, that we have to give this over. I just, I think if we could add it to the card, if there's enough room, that would be great.
And if I can follow up on one comment on that, um, Member Gallo, the one concern I have, the biggest concern I have is, um, physical addresses. So, um, if you put your email address on there, somebody may email you, and you didn't want that email, but I'm much more concerned about the potential of somebody, um, arriving at your front door. And I think we had a situation, it was actually a board member in another jurisdiction, where that became a problem. Um, so I, I don't think we can fix that right this second, but we, we wanted to know the ZIP code, or the school, what district people were, um, in, so that it could help board members up here when they hear from public speakers, parents in particular. But, um, specific, um, street addresses may be more information that might be appropriate in this day and age. I don't know. Vice Chair? Did we already hear from you? I thought we did. All right. We're back to you. Do you want to see if you can get us back on track?
Oh, try. Let's go back up. So, so the first section was about the public input period prior to pre-agenda meeting. Um, I added, uh, and then you said you liked the invent of the disruption, the public, like we had before, we had a, had to, that thirty minutes. The, the issue is, your regular school board meeting starts at a time certain. So if the public cannot behave itself during pre-agenda, then that, that thirty minutes goes away. And this actually authored, authorized you to cut it short as well, 'cause it's not required by law. Uh, moving on to the public comment period for items on the agenda. I hate being so redundant, but I think it's really important until we get used to vernacular of public input period and public comment period. I think it's important for the public to put that out there as well. So this hasn't changed, um, before, that, from what we had. Um, I think I, I did add specifically, though, um, the statutory reference that says that we should be given, everybody should be given a reasonable operating turn, and then we have, in order for us to maintain orderly conduct in a public meeting regarding the amount of time, manner, and place in which an individual can address the board. That's why it's in there. Allotted time for speakers, we're gonna fix that, three minutes for the public input period prior to pre-agenda meeting, like we just talked about. Dr. Jenkins says that. This is the language that I added on my own, um, about subsection B, during the public comment period for items on the agenda, the time limitations for each speaker shall be as follows. One, I had zero to twenty, but we wouldn't have any speakers if we had zero. Anyway, one to twenty speakers are allotted three minutes each. Twenty-one to forty speakers are allotted two minutes each, and forty-one plus speakers are allotted one minute each. In the event there are forty-one or more speakers, the following tiered approach shall be applied to those who have signed up to speak. And I'm thinking, like you all suggested, a checklist or something, a checkbox in the, on the blue card. Tier one is reserved for parents, legal guardians, and employees. They would go first. Tier two is reserved for citizens who reside in Orange County, Florida, so they would go second. And tier three would be reserved for citizens who do not reside in Orange County, Florida, so they would go third. This requires a little bit of school board services staff manipulation time if we have more than forty-one speakers. But that allows the priority that you all have expressed, not all of you, but some of you have expressed, that allows that to happen. So I didn't know if we want to discuss revisions to that particular, if that's clear enough, or if it's not clear enough, if you want to expand the one to twenty, or the twenty-one to forty, or the forty-one and above, or if you want to make it more narrow.
Are you saying if we have a hundred speakers, that one to twenty gets three minutes, and then the, you're not saying that, right?
No, no, no. If there are...
Total.
So, so...
Okay. Good. That's what I thought.
Okay, so maybe I need to say that. One, yeah, I'm not saying speakers one to twenty get three minutes, speakers, you know, so it's the number of speakers. So maybe I need to clarify that.
No, I, I thought it was clear when you, just when you said something just a minute ago, was when you got me confused, and I just, whoo.
No. I think if you have over, over forty-one speakers that want to sign up, like, let's say a hundred fifty of them come, they are limited to one minute each. Um, and then you could have a, a priority for those one hundred fifty speakers in that tier. I, logistically, we'd have to figure it out with staff and, and the blue card situation, assuming that we always have the blue card situation, 'cause we're also exploring some online, uh, mechanisms to assign.
The only thing I would change is when you say tiered, is that maybe we want, maybe wanna use a term like priority.
Priority. I could do that.
Yeah, the board may prioritize speakers in the following approach, and then it would be priority one, two, three. And, and that would be, um, again, it's, it's just in order of how we call them, not whether we call them. And, okay, Dr. Jenkins, your record?
Madam Chair, I wonder if we might use the term, I didn't see it, but it's glaring to me now, if we might just use the term individuals rather than citizens?
Oh, gosh, yes. I'm sorry, that was one of my, yeah, um, members of the public or individuals. I, yeah, I saw that, too. I was like, the word citizens is not an okay word.
So there, we're gonna say, reserved for members of the public?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Sorry.
And there's another place where the words, I, I would just do a global, 'cause I found like three different places where we use the term citizens besides that. It's an old vernacular we were so used to.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, making myself a note. Um, sorry. Okay, so, uh, it's a priority, right?
Yeah. And also, we say, board may prioritize the speakers using the following...
Yeah, I haven't gotten that. Following approach?
Uh-huh, following approach.
And to, who has signed up to, who have already signed up to speak, right? Because they have to get here by a time certain in order to sign up to speak. It's not just unrolling, right? Okay, is that clear enough, if you wanna look at it again?
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna flag this myself, because I want to, I, I don't want them to think that speakers one through twenty.
Yeah.
Because that's not the intent.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we'll work on, yeah. Thanks, Ms. Enville. I'm a little worried about, um, maintaining our quorum here. I'm not sure. Do...
We're not taking official action. This is a work session.
That's true, that's true. Thank you. Okay.
So, um, then, moving on, there was no, um, so, I wanted to have, since you're here, I wanna have a discussion about telephonic. So, by law, you're not required to take callers. We have made that accommodation in light of the pandemic. Um, when you do have callers, there are certain things that you can't, I don't know how you're gonna verify or follow your tiered approach. I tried to do that there, but, I mean, I guess it's like anything else. They, you know, you're relying upon what they provide to you. So, um, callers. I didn't know if you wanted to have that discussion about callers, or, we haven't really had that. We, we've been using it, so that's, I wanted, I thought in policy it was important to keep, because we might, there might be an instance where you either wanna keep it and/or not. So I add, uh, by motion and vote of the board, speakers may call in during any public input to address the board. But it's not at each board meeting, so...
So let me ask you this. Um, I think, uh, I always, not always, but a lot of times, I think that op, operational issues like this, we want the policy broad enough that we can fluctuate based on the needs of the time. So, during last year, that, no vaccines, yes, we wanted people to call in. Right now, I want people to be able to call in, because I know there's growing concerns about the tension in the room. And so if we want people to feel safe, if we want people to participate, we need to make them feel safe. So, I would not want to remove the opportunity to call in. But I also hate for us to have to come back and revisit this whole policy. If at some point, we were back to a sense of normalcy, and there's no reason not to come in, pandemic is gone, tensions down. So, my preference would be for us to not have to memorialize this one way or the other policy. I just don't know right this minute, um, how exactly we might do that. Does it ha, does it have to be by, it changed the policy?
No, I, it just is off, I mean, it was something that has come up that we didn't really have regulated.
Right.
So... I mean...
And I'm gonna, there's, there's one other concern that I have. Um, I think we may be reaching, um, a point where we've accomplished about as much as we're going to as a board. I could be wrong about that.
Well, we only have a couple more provisions. I don't know if you wanna keep going.
Okay.
So you want me to revisit the calling provision? Yes?
Oh, I was actually talking about just stamina here.
No. Do we need a break?
Um, no, no, but I find myself even thinking, okay, how do we, how do we wanna do this? And normally, I should, I should be able to think about how, how we wanna say that, more generic language, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Member Bird?
So, sorry.
It does. Right. So you say that, and we haven't been doing that. Is that new? Oh, it is?
No, I, I don't think the board actually voted on, on adding callers. I think it's just something you discussed, and we were able to do it technologically.
So are you suggesting by this language, that at the beginning of each meeting, we would take...
No, no, that wasn't the intent. And when I read it out loud, that was not the intent, because I don't want you to do it for each meeting.
Okay.
But the public maybe afforded the opportunity to participate by telephone, and in that event, they shall follow the, or something like that.
So according to Member Bird's interpretation of this, then, the board could also, uh, suspend that practice by vote. Can you make that more clear?
I can.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I specifically added the, this isn't new, though, this is what we had before. If, if the time allotted for the public input period during the pre-agenda expires, those who signed up to speak but did not get a chance to speak will need to return to a subsequent pre-agenda meeting. They don't get any preference in the speaking rules. I didn't want them to say, well, I didn't get, you know, I was next last time, so I gotta be first this time. That's not how it goes. You get to sign up new each time. All right, signing up to speak. Um, what I added was, the superintendent is authorized to establish reasonable timeframes and procedures governing the signup process within the parameters of this policy. Before, you only had that they could sign up to speak fifteen minutes before, but when we have a hundred fifty people, that was odd. Oh.
That was my...
When we have a hundred fifty people, we may not be able to get them all signed up to speak within those fifteen minutes. So this is more of a generic thing, if, if you're okay with that provision. Yeah? No? Yes? Okay. Moving on, relevant topics instead of germane topics. Um, added the, in parentheses, non-agenda items. Speakers wishing to address items or issues on the regular board meeting agenda will be asked to return and address the board during the public comment period for such regularly scheduled board meeting for the agenda item in question. I think we've done a really good job of capturing people who sign up to speak, uh, school board services can identify, oh, they're, it looks like they're speaking on something on the board, uh, regular meeting, so we do that. Um, other matters, I added that specifically, the public's opportunity, this is in statute, the public's opportunity to be heard does not apply to an official act in circum, uh, act in certain emergency situations, and an act involving no more than a ministerial act, such as the approval of minutes and a cer, ceremonial proclamations, and/or in a meeting that is exempt from 286.011, which is your, uh, executive sessions. Cota civility was always in here. Um, I added, um, see also board policy KFA, which governs the conduct of people on school board property. And, these are the last two big things that you have to worry about, because the other thing is, so these are just the last two things. Um, visual, audio, and/or demonstrative aids.
Demonstrative is such a word.
I know, right? I was trying to, I was trying to be broad, but yet narrow, right? So this is a new one. Members of the public shall not be permitted to use visual, audio, and/or demonstrative aids. Oh, to use, bring, sorry. Well, they can't use visual or audio. Darn it.
They may not bring such aids into the chambers?
Yes. And do we call it board chambers or boardroom?
Board chambers.
Thank you. Okay. I don't, I don't know. That's what I was asking. That was, that was my comment over on the side, 'cause when I was drafting it last night, I didn't know board chambers or boardroom. What do we call it? Boardroom?
I call it chambers, because it's part of my thing about the protocol, and it kinda helps to say, you're not just in a room, you're in a chamber.
This is, this is semantics. So that's what I was wondering, what, the preference of the board, since I have a majority of you here, and, and on, and on the phone. What do you prefer to call it?
I like chambers, but the superintendent's gonna call, tell us how much it's gonna cost to switch the sign out.
I'm not switching the sign, but I like chamber.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we're good with chambers. Okay. So, um, the board didn't have the opportunity to discuss this before, because it really hadn't really been an issue. So, what it used to say is no audio, no visual or audio, I don't know. They couldn't bring them in as part of, during, during a presentation. So, it didn't specifically say you can't bring them in, which is what I think the board wants to discuss now. Do you, do you want to limit them? We certainly can. We can, we can limit the time, manner, and place, as I said, under the statute. But it has to be in your policy, and it has to say that. Um, I do think that there are some, and, that some of the bigger ones, or some of them, they had them on sticks, and they would block the view of the people behind them. I think those are some of your issues. I mean, are the demonstrative aids or visuals, are they, are they for you? Or are they for the public, or the, the media who may be watching? So, I just didn't know. Um, this is what I proposed, but you can feel free to...
Dr. Jenkins?
Amend.
So just as a point of background, this is a discussion that we had previously. It used to just be part of our protocol, not policy, that, uh, posters were not allowed. The chair would simply say, I'm sorry, you can't bring the posters in, you'll have to leave them outside. It was a consideration for the people sitting behind you who couldn't see, um, and it was just a rule that was in place. I would strongly recommend we have some limitation to large posters, because we are not going to allow people to stand in the back of the room. That's supposed to be reserved for the media. So if you're sitting down with a large poster, you are going to be blocking individuals' view behind you. But historically, they were not allowed. Uh, Ms. Enville, um, and at least advised that we could not continue to prohibit them, because that was not in your policy.
I would prefer that we just not allow them. I, I have in the past seen very, very inappropriate material, and then we get into deciding what is and isn't appropriate while we're trying to run a meeting. So I think it would be easier to just not permit them in the chambers, if we, as long as we can legally do that. I don't, nobody's objecting, so I think we're...
And Mr. Palmerini's nodding his head. And also, Mr. Palmerini, while you're nodding, if we say you don't get to stand in the back of the room, in fact, in front of that media area, that's actually a walkway between the two doors, if you'll notice. So we're going to say to individuals, you'll need to be seated. You're not allowed to stand in the back of the room. Does that need to be in policy, or is that just a, um, safety precaution?
That's operational safety precautions.
All right.
I did add it as number ten, in case you wanted it.
No, no posters in policy, no standing is part of our, our safety practice. Got it.
Okay. Member Colbert?
So I do think this goes to safety. So if you're not allowed to congregate in the back of the room, uh, one... back of the room, one, if you're holding up a large sign, you are blocking people behind you, and that, that's not fair. You're here to address the board. You're not here to address other members of the public. I do, I do believe it becomes a safety issue. The ones that are on sticks and poles, I think that's allowing you to bring something into the boardroom that you normally would not be allowed to bring. So I think it, it is a safety measure.
Thank you, Member Cobert.
And I did, just, just to clarify, unless otherwise permitted by the board, the board may decide that they wanna hand out pink flags for October, and you wanna wave them and take a picture. But that's a board direction thing, that's a board permission thing.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, Member Cobert?
Make one more point. It does say, unless otherwise permitted by the board. We have had, when, on the occasion of a naming of a school, where the school community brought two banners, waiting to see which name the school would get, and when they got it, they unfurled the banner. So unless permitted by the board is an important distinction here.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. That even, that, that hits to the point. I can see that enthusiasm. Super. All right.
And so I'm gonna eliminate number 10, is that correct? But that's gonna be an operational thing? Yes?
So we don't, we don't need it listed there?
It, it's operational, you don't need it, but I just-
So maybe it's not necessary, but maybe it wouldn't hurt to have it included. I'm straining to look at Mr. Paul Marini.
Mr. Paul, is there any reason not to include it?
It's not legally required, but if you wanna make sure everybody knows, yeah, you can include it.
I, I would rather than, than I can cite to our policy without having to pull out statute, although that's kinda fun to do.
And then, number 11, I was gonna add a district police addition, something there. And number 12 was that the board reserves the right to refuse entrance into the board chambers if someone, to someone who cannot, it's, it's gonna be nicer than that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and guess what? We're at the end!
Okay.
Wait, oh, wait, no, I have a special extra presentation that Mr. Paul Marini would like to update you on. Are we done with the B policies?
While he's, while he's coming, there's still this issue of time certain for the end of a meeting. We have it when we're doing rezoning for a new school. That's when we used to have really long meetings. The board, I think, needs some protection that you don't have to go till 2:00 AM.
I completely agree.
Simply because you have speakers. So we have a time certain, I believe it's 10 o'clock.
We do, 10 o'clock.
At time certain, the board meeting has to end, and it loops over to the next day. No new signup for speakers, just finishing the meeting the next day.
I, I concur with that. The only thing, that obviously means that we need to know what time it's starting the next day, and we always need to have that time cleared on everybody's panel.
So we're gonna have to put that in a notice.
As well as board members need to know that every Tuesday also involves a potential Wednesday meeting. Okay.
Got it, thank you.
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I don't know if it's the next meeting-
It's similar, isn't there a rezoning policy already, that it's 10 o'clock?
Okay. And this, these policies won't be effective till they go to the rule development workshop and come back to us, but-
Right, we're, we're not done with that yet, so.
All right.
Well, I was asking about this, what she said about rezoning, when is that, if it goes to a Wednesday?
So, so we don't have any rezonings coming up right away, but if we had one with lots of spe, we haven't had that kind, actually, the last few times we've done rezoning, we've not had that long list of speakers. But if it did come up, we'd give you plenty of notice. We don't, we don't have one coming up soon.
Did I hear 10 o'clock is the ending time?
Yes.
I believe that's the same we have on rezoning, if you'll double check it.
Do you want me to add a provision in there, unless, I mean, it might be that you have four more speakers, and it'll be, right?
Yes, absolutely. I was thinking the same thing, that I don't wanna have to boot us out of here if we're almost done.
And of the, at the discretion of the board, or, or the board reverse, okay. I, I got it, okay. All right. Don't, don't delete my changes.
I'm not touching your computer. I don't know. Members, members of the board, just wanted to give you a brief update. I sent you, like, three or four emails yesterday. Just wanted to explain the import. It's on our rule challenge. The Department of Health filed a motion to dismiss not only our rule challenge, but the rule challenge filed by the parents and the NAACP to say that there was no standing for either, any of those parties to bring a challenge. The administrative judge dismissed the NAACP and the parents, and said they had no stand, no standing, because their injuries are speculative, meaning they hadn't gone to school and actually gotten sick. So they hadn't suffered an injury, in fact. With us, school districts, he said, we are persons under the statute and under the 12056, any person may file a rule challenge, because we are a unit of local government. The administrative judge cited, like, 38 or 39 separate cases where district, units of local government had standing and did, in fact, file rule challenges. In response to that ruling, the Department of Health filed a writ of prohibition with the First DCA. And a writ of prohibition is a, it's an extraordinary writ, meaning it's not often, granted, and I cited you some language, but it says, it's meant to be very narrow in scope to be employed with great caution and only utilized in emergencies. And it says, and the Florida Supreme Court has says, a writ of prohibition cannot be used to revoke an order already entered. So we think, in our analysis of it, that since the order was already entered by DOA to say we do in fact have standing, that this writ of prohibition is untimely. If they thought it shouldn't have been in, in front of DOA, in the first place, they should have filed immediately rather than filing a motion to dismiss. If we have to, what's, what may happen is the First District Court of Appeals, where this writ of prohibition has been filed, they may issue an order to show cause, and then we will respond to it accordingly through our outside lawyers. But the argument we're going to make is, this would be untimely, because it should have been filed immediately if you thought DOA didn't have jurisdiction. And that is the brief, brief update on where we are in litigation.
That was amazing, John.
Thank you.
That was succinct, and everybody could understand it. And I'm not saying that's unusual. I mean, I know that came across that way.
The superintendent would disagree with that assertion, with respect to Amy and I, but I digress.
And, awesome. Okay, if there's no further business to come before the board, this meeting is now adjourned. Good meeting, guys. Very good meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, great job, Amy. All right.